I call to order the November 10, 2020, special public meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Bates?
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
Mr. Messer, say here.
Say here.
Here.
Okay.
All right. Members of the public who wish to speak during hearing, the public must request to do so during the first 10 minutes after the start of the meeting. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking the chat button. Submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. In keeping with the board's standard practice for hearing the public, you must click the visibility icon when you are recognized to speak. Individuals who request to be heard after the first 10 minutes of the meeting will not be recognized to speak during this meeting. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce this evening's presentation.
Thank you, members of the board as well as members of the public. I'm going to pull up my PowerPoint, and I am going to actually present from here so that our guests can present from the podium. All right, next slide, please. So this evening, we want to provide an update to the board regarding our health data for the community. Next slide. We are very happy to be able to have some of our friends with us from the medical community who will be talking about the health data for the city of Cincinnati as well as for the county. So tonight, we will have two presentations. They will be broken up into two separate parts. The first presentation will be a community health data update, and that will be provided by Dr. Amin from the Cincinnati Health Collaborative as well as Dr. Khan from Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center. I'd like to thank both the Health Collaborative, Children's Hospital, as well as the Cincinnati Health Department for working with us on our protocols and procedures and our data analysis as we have been working to implement strategies and precautionary measures for COVID-19. So that is the first presentation. The second presentation will offer some very specific information and data as it relates to Cincinnati Public Schools' operations as well as attendance for both staff and for students. And that will be presented by our HR Director, Paul McDull, and our Assistant Superintendent, Susan Bunty. So at this point in time, I would like to turn the presentation over to the two doctors who are with us this evening.
And then there's a button to push.
Good evening.
Thank you, everyone, for having presented this evening. I'll get started by just talking a little bit of where we are regarding the pandemic since we last spoke. So as of today, for the city of Cincinnati, we're at 8,404 cases. Since the beginning of October, we've started to see that study increase on a daily basis. One of the second metrics that we look at is the 14-day trend of positive cases for the city. As you're seeing here, the yellow, or sorry, the green dots represent a decrease in the seven-day moving average from the previous day, and the red dots represent an increase. So out of the last 14 days, we've seen two days where we've seen a decline, and the remaining 12 days, we've continued to see an increase. We are at a 14-day average of 96 cases per day. Just to put in perspective, relative to the increase in cases that we saw during the summer months, we were at about 69 cases per day. So to highlight a little bit about the percent positive that's in Hamilton County, outside of the city, we were at 9.4%. When you're looking at the city of Cincinnati with our 52 neighborhoods, we were at 6.2%. And then, Hamilton County overall positivity rate and tests per 100,000 for the county is 8.1%. So one of the other metrics that the board looks at is the turnaround time for tests. And this is looking at four positive test results. It's taken a median of two days to return any test results, and that's been pretty steady for the last few months and has actually been between that 24-hour to 48-hour period. So a much improved turnaround time. Looking at the Ohio Public Health Advisory that comes out from the state, so as of last week, November 5, Hamilton County remains in the red level. And we believe last week, we were, the star, the black star, was on the county indicating that we were approaching yellow. So as of last week, we were, or sorry, approaching purple. But as of last week, we just remain in the red and not yet approaching purple. So I wanted to highlight a few pieces about what's happening within the schools and the number of cases. So as of today, this morning, we have 70 positive student cases, and we have 89 positive staff cases. So this is since school has opened as of October 12. And related to those 70 positive students, we have 105 close contacts that have been identified, and 70 for students, and 76 close contacts for staff. So I want to take a step further related to that. And one of the other metrics that we're interested to know is transmission happening within the school setting. So based on individuals who were identified as a close contact, we have five individuals who converted to a positive COVID-19 case. We then looked to see if we can identify if that transmission happened in the school, and we found that there was one extracurricular activity, two extracurricular activity individual where that transmission could have happened in that setting, and then one teacher-to-teacher transmission. So thus far, we have seen no student-to-student transmission within the school, nor have we seen teacher-to-student transmission. And a few other key metrics that we look at that are very important to monitor success are the testing that we do in collaboration with Cincinnati Children's Hospital. So we've developed protocols so that when a student arrives to the school, which I'm sure you're aware of, that they are screened, and if they are not meeting their requirement for screening, they're sent to the nurse to be evaluated for potentially getting tested for COVID-19. And so the time that that screening is happening to the time where they're sent to the isolation room for 90% of the students, that's happening within 10 minutes of them being in the school. Another important metric is when they are getting tested, the turnaround time between the samples getting sent to Children's Hospital lab to the time that we are notified and the schools notified of the case is less than 18 hours. And so that period of the next day, 6:00 AM notification, is happening for about 83% of the students. So that's much better than we're seeing in the community. So that's really great. I also wanted to provide the age distribution for the student close contacts. So for those who are kindergarten or younger, that's about 44%, and those that are seven years or older to 12th grade, it's about 56%. And I will pass it on to my colleague, Dr. Khan. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Robert Khan. I help oversee Cincinnati Children's Hospital's community and population health work, and have had the pleasure to work closely with your leadership and many of your teachers and staff over time and trying to get the best health and outcomes for kids. What I just want to spend first, just go back for a moment and just say how outstanding these metrics really are. When I talk to colleagues around the country, the notion that 90% of kids can be in a safe isolation space in less than 10 minutes, and that 83% of tests are resulted out, not just to family, nurse, but also public health by 6:00 AM the next morning, so families can make those decisions, is really truly extraordinary, and I'd say best-in-class nationally for how a school can operate. What I wanted to do, or what I was asked to do, is just frame a little bit, how do we make sense of the many measures that are out there in terms of informing school decision-making, and share with you some work that we've put together with Commissioner Kesterman of the Hamilton County Health Department, and Commissioner Moore of the Cincinnati Health Department, along with colleagues at Cincinnati Children's and the Health Collaborative, in collectively reviewing the many, many measures that are out there and try to figure out, how do you focus down, and how do you have a sequence discipline to looking through the measures to inform whether to be onsite or hybrid? And I just want to do a real call-out to that central black line statement there that says, "Please note, the science of COVID is evolving," and that notion that with each month, we're getting more experience and more knowledge locally, regionally, and across the country in how to manage the disease, and so that these guidelines can and should evolve over time depending on our knowledge of the science. So the way we had framed this over the summertime here and many other places around the country was informed by what's happening in the community. And what you see here was actually guided by the Harvard Global Health Institute, but has been picked up by many other places, that a sequence of a way to look at the measures. And you just heard several of these same measures, right? How many new cases are there in the community? That is, the daily new cases per 100,000, smoothed over seven days. Is that going up or going down, and what's the trend? And finally, how ready is the community to manage the disease? And that's really what the percent of positive tests are about. It's really about, are we testing at a rate equal to the amount of disease in the community? And so as you're getting up to 10, and 20, and 30% of tests positive, it's clear you're falling behind in the number of tests you should be doing. So that's where the percent of COVID tests that are positive is an indicator more of the robustness of your community response. In that packet we put together in August with the commissioners, though, we put in as a second sheet, like, what will be happening in the schools as a place for consideration? With a similar kind of sequence, how many cases are there in the school? What's the rate, and what's the trend? And then what's the sort of rippling impact? How many close contacts have there been that are now quarantined among both staff and among the students? And then finally, key processes that have to be done reliably to break the link between COVID and spread, which would include issues like staying home when sick, and masking and spacing, cohorting, ventilation, and so on. So that notion that you just heard, which were the community measures, and then what's happening in the school, really is framed, I just put together a simple graphic, which is there are these community measures, and then there are these emerging school measures. And a lot of folks have sort of said, which ones should we focus on? Should we focus on the community measures? Should we focus on what's happening in the school? And the way I framed it here is, you've got the community COVID measures, you've got the school. The key issue is that those original frame of measures was done in the summer before there was any in-school experience. Now, you have many programs that have been onsite since August, September, October, November, and how do we make sense of that data and what's changed? What's changed is what CPS has done really incredibly reliably well, which is implement those protective behaviors, right? So you see that sequence, and we sometimes in safety at the hospital, in the nuclear industry, in the airline industry, is this notion of Swiss cheese. No one measure by itself is going to completely stop the transmission. So that's why we call it a bundle. You have to do the masking, the spacing, the ventilation, the cohorting, and so on, and that if you do all of them, the odds that anything breaks through is dramatically reduced. So having put all that in place, I think what we're trying to emphasize now is, with all that in place, it's time to shift the primary focus of the measures to what's happening in the school. So rather than anchoring first and foremost on what's happening in the community and sort of ignoring all the things you've done really well, is anchor your initial consideration as how are the schools doing, and then secondarily, what's happening in the community. And put it similarly to, if there is a car traveling at 30 miles an hour, what's the likelihood of an injury? Well, then you add a seatbelt, airbags, and a dozen other safety things, and it's much more important to look at what happens to the passenger rather than what's the force happening externally. The key issue, though, is, while the science says that this works, it has to be done reliably, and has to be measured, and watched, and reinforced, and importantly, not just on school, but in the extracurricular activities and as folks transition home. That being said, as the community, let me just add, the one other piece that's been added most recently, I just wanted to highlight, is the testing of the staff. The recognizing just the amount of disease in the community, working with the County Cares Act, is a program called Test and Detect, is now implementing testing for staff in the schools, and just in the last two to three weeks, almost 2,000 of your staff have been tested. And I know Paul McDull and others are working to make sure every five weeks, every staff member can be tested, so as an additional layer in the Swiss cheese. But that's not to say that as the pressure rises externally, there is an increasing chance you will get isolated community cases coming in, as Dr. Amin just stated, and with each new community case, there's an increased risk of in-school transmission. And I would just say, the number-one measure emerging around the country is, what is the rate of in-school transmission? Not just simply the number of cases, because those cases would happen whether kids were in the school or not in the school. I think another way to frame it would be, had you been fully remote this whole time over the last four weeks, how many cases of COVID could have been averted? And based on the data that Dr. Amin just presented, there were two cases of in-school transmission, so you would have been remote, and you might have averted those two cases. All the other cases are community-acquired cases popping up, again, to the best of our ability, sort of testing every student, every staff, every single day, right? So that notion of in-school transmission is the excess number of cases due to being here in school. And because you've done this so reliably, and kudos to your staff, and frankly, the kids, keeping their masks on and keeping their distance, you've really managed to practically eliminate. And I'll just say, as we talked to five or six other districts around the county, very similar kinds of results. Across five districts that we've been surveying, there are maybe one to two cases of in-school transmission that are well documented. Extracurricular is a little bit of a different story and harder to control, but true in-classroom transmission, very low across the county districts that we've spoken with. So with that in mind, this notion that through August, September, October, what's the evidence accumulating in the school? We feel increasingly comfortable that we should switch, that the primary focus would be on what's happening in the school, and that secondary focus being what's the amount of community pressure pushing on, as I said, the Swiss cheese. I'll just finish by saying, this isn't just sort of our local adaptation of these measures, which what I'm sharing here is from the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, the Policy Lab, where I highlighted in yellow their statement, "We have intentionally moved beyond the absolutism of case incidence and test positivity thresholds that might have been helpful at the start but are no longer the most pressing question." And what you see to the right there, evidence of in-school transmission is also what they're recommending in that policy lab. Further, you might have heard quite a few press reports in mid-October, a group that's accumulating evidence across districts across the country out of Brown University, what does the health data now say about safely reopening schools? So again, just emphasis on understanding what's happening within the school as your primary consideration. And I think we'll stop there, and we turn it back over to your team. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share, and happy to answer questions afterwards.
Thank you, Dr. Khan, and thank you, Dr. Amin. All right. Drive for me? Thank you. All right, so now we're going to start the second part of our presentation. Next slide. Great, thank you. Next slide, please. Thank you. So everyone on the board, you're familiar with these 31 guidelines from the CDC. These are the same guidelines that we have been talking about probably since June, and these are the core components and lay the foundation for our safety plan, not only in our schools, but here at the district level. You heard Dr. Khan talk about protective measures and how the district has done a really good job. All of our staff members have worked extremely hard to implement these protective measures. And as we look at these 31 guidelines from the CDC, I want to just highlight a couple of areas. First, in the behaviors that reduce spread, cloth face coverings. And then, under maintaining healthy operations, numbers 23 and number 25, backup staffing and signs and symptoms as it relates to daily check-ins. The reason I want to highlight these very specifically is, when we think about the protective measures that we have in place, we think about compliance as it relates to these operational things. The data that we're now going to present to you will show that, at this point, our ability to implement these protective measures are being compromised by an absence of staff within our buildings. So these guidelines are built upon really having people in place to help us more specifically around the mask-wearing, the temperature checking, which will be the signs and symptoms, as well as six feet of social distancing on the operational side. And then, if you look at six feet of social distancing in terms of instruction, when there are staff absences, we used to be able to split classes apart if we didn't have a substitute or combine classes. We cannot do that with six feet of social distancing, and so that presents some challenges in addition to making sure that we're able to keep kids in very small groups when we have staff members who are absent. So now I would like to introduce our Director for HR, Paul McDull, and he's going to talk about staff absences.
Good evening, board members, and good evening to our public that's watching in today. I'd like to share some information with you, one, some data facts in regards to our attendance, and then also be able to take some time to kind of share some of the real-life situations that we're dealing with in our schools and in the central office building as well. I first want to just commend all of our staff, as our superintendent said, have done a wonderful job trying to keep everyone safe as possible. And as we know, and as we see cases on an increase in the public coming into our building, we are being met with some challenges related to our staffing, even though we had created a backup staffing plan in order to meet the needs of this pandemic. Next slide, please. You can see, our chart here charts from May to yesterday, and we have 149 positive staff COVID cases. You can see kind of a spike over the last couple weeks, a little bit of a dip most recently, but you can see the number of positive cases we have amongst our staff. And again, this goes back to May. Next slide, please. At a previous board meeting, I shared with you kind of the number impact of what we're looking at when we talk about absenteeism. This is absenteeism in our buildings, where we were at 480 on one particular day, on October 28. And just today, we did another count with our schools turning in attendance today, and we were at 780. So we're seeing an increase in absenteeism amongst our buildings. Just as I was walking into the board meeting, I got a text message that we have three staff members that are being sent home from a school, which basically means now we have to quickly adapt for tomorrow, well, not tomorrow, but for Thursday, to provide coverage for our students. Next slide, please. So I'd like to share with you some of the messages. These are scenarios that we've been dealing with just since last week. And when I say "we," I mean myself, our superintendent, our deputy superintendent, our assistant superintendents are dealing with these on a regular basis, the phone calls of concern to us on how to handle these. So one particular school, School A, the grade-one teacher is COVID-positive. The only other second-grade teacher is a close contact and has to be quarantined. So in that scenario, we lost our two first-grade teachers, which means we then had to provide coverage for that period of time by using substitute teachers, our building subs, our super subs, or in some cases, our civil service staff. Just yesterday, we had one assistant principal that tested positive for COVID at a high school. The second assistant principal was close contact. There are a total of two assistant principals in those buildings, and they're both now out for a period of time. So we go to our sub-resource and try to find a current assistant principal that we can shift and move, or a retired administrator that we could use for that period of time. Scenario C, all grade-two teachers are in quarantine. This was three grade-two teachers. So again, having to come in, bring in a team to provide that services, and this is where we kind of get into this absenteeism data that I presented to you earlier. Option D, three teachers on our team are out on sick leave, fourth teacher on team and the paraprofessionals provide instruction. So this is another example where we're having to rely on our civil service staff, and God bless them because they stand up and try to help out when they can. And then E, two teachers on quarantine with no staff available cover the classroom. Myself and Deputy Amat Detwitz, on Sunday evening, the solution was, the principal had to cover the classroom for the first two classes on that particular day. She stepped up and did the job. Next slide, please. We're also seeing the impact here in this building as far as various departments. So again, not naming names, not wanting to single any department out by name, but Department A, one employee is COVID-positive, four employees are in quarantine. Department B, one employee is COVID-positive, again, another four employees now were in quarantine because they were in close distance. D, one employee is COVID-positive, five employees now quarantined. And then lastly, D, two employees are COVID-positive, additional employee working remotely. Within these scenarios, we had one entire division of the apartment that is now quarantined. I thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have later, but now I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty to talk about nurses and student attendance.
I just first want to say thank you to our friends from the Cincinnati Health Department, the Health Collaborative, and Cincinnati Children's. Dr. Khan and his team, Dr. Amin and her team are on the phone with us every single morning at 7:30, talking through student cases and staff cases and how best to mitigate. So we are deeply appreciative for their assistance and for our staff. However, as we look at the next slide, we know that no one is immune from being impacted by staff absences, so this has also impacted our nurses. Please note that the Health Department has moved mountains, and I mean that with all sincerity, to make sure that all of our schools are covered, but they too are being impacted by absences. On the next slide, you can see our student attendance. So again, on the left-hand column, you can see from August through October what our attendance was in distance learning, and the total complement of our attendance during blended learning is the second row on that chart. On the right-hand side, you may remember, last week, we did not have our A group on Tuesday, as it was Election Day. The A group Wednesday attendance was 68.4%, and then on in-person for Cohort B on Thursday was 73.2%, and on B day for Friday, rather, it was 73.2 as well. At this time, I would like to turn this back over to our superintendent for closing remarks.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So I mentioned to the board, I believe, last week, a week before last, that I had the opportunity to attend a business roundtable with 10 superintendents from neighboring districts, and they were asked the questions around, what are you most concerned about, what's going well? And the number-one challenge that those superintendents presented was the challenge of staff, having staff in place when people are sick in isolation or in quarantine. of staff, having staff in place when people are sick in isolation or in quarantine. The superintendents all expressed that they have tapped out of subs and in some instances are now going to distance learning for particular grade levels. Two neighboring districts are going to, high school students will all be in distance learning based upon needing staff to be able to cover those buildings. Next slide, please. So we are, like other institutions, during the governor's press conference, and this is pulled directly from information from that press conference, where UC Health cited that Cincinnati is at risk of running out of hospital beds in approximately nine weeks. And their most immediate concern is in terms of patient care is staffing. Though even UC Health is concerned about having enough staff in place to care for sick people. Next slide, please. So I think that based upon the data and that information that has been presented, you heard Dr. Amin talk about the last 12 days out of 14 days were red data points in the 14-day trend. So our health data in terms of the community is currently unstable in terms of the spread that's taking place within the city of Cincinnati as well as the county. Could you go to the next slide for just a moment? This is a map, and this map shows COVID-19-related deaths by zip code. And so I took the time to go through and look up all of these zip codes to identify the communities that are attached to the zip codes. Where you see white, that means that there were zero deaths. And where you see blue, that means that there were greater than one death. So if you look at areas like Fairfield, Westchester, Mason, Lebanon, Sharonville, Evendale, Blue Ash, Newtown, all of those areas are white, meaning that they have not experienced COVID-19 related deaths. This isn't my data. This is data that I pulled from the report that I received today from the Health Department. And then you look at zip codes like Taylor Park, Cove Dale, Cheviot, Price Hill, Westin, University Heights, Wanted Hills, Avondale, Evanston, Oakley, Madisonville, College Hill, Bond Hill, and the list goes on and on. These are primarily zip codes that service our students where they have actually experienced deaths as it relates to COVID-19. Can you go back one slide, please? So going back to the stability of the community as it relates to the health data, it's an unstable community in terms of that. You also heard that there is little spread within CPS. There have been actually two incidences, one teacher to teacher and the other, I believe, was a coach to coach. And that's because of the great protocols and the wonderful partnerships that we have with Children's Hospital and the Health Department, Health Collaborative. It's wonderful for CPS. However, we also need to make sure that we can stabilize our staff to be able to enact those protocols. So here's what's real. The staff absences are real. Each school has a staff backup plan that has been in existence from the beginning of when the schools started to develop their plans. And in many instances, they are running out of the people to supply the backup plan. So it's unstable. So as an example, one week you may have two teachers out, and it's a popcorn effect within a week and from week to week. So you'll get those two back, and then the next week, three more out, different grade level, different content area. And so you see this popcorn effect all over the place, not only within our schools, but also within central office. In addition, you can imagine how important the nurses are to the protocols, evaluating the kids once they get to the isolation room, and then deciding whether or not they need a COVID test, and if they're granted permissioned and actually providing that COVID test. You could see by the graph that was provided that there are many instances, and everyone with their best intentions, but have to stay home when they themselves are sick or when they're caring for someone else. The nurses are a vital part of our safety protocols. So as we think through and look at the different options that could be presented this evening, what I'd like to do is to talk for just a couple of moments about a learning model consideration. So if we think about the health data, we think about specifically Cincinnati Public Schools data, we think about the implications as it relates to our staff absences. I'm going to talk about some of the pros for distance learning and pros for blended learning, just as a reminder. So for blended learning, there are some pros in terms of little school transmission of COVID-19 within our schools. A pro is considering the social and emotional learning impact for our young people and their connection with each other, as well as with the adults in the building. There are obviously also benefits for our younger children being in session, as well as our specialized classrooms. And our students need access to in-person learning supports that we offer within our schools. Those are some of the pros, and there are probably five or six or 10 more that I haven't thought of. Here are some of the pros for distance learning. We could possibly decrease our staff absences, and those who are in quarantine can still provide services through digital learning if they themselves are not physically sick. And we've seen that before, or we've seen people who are sick before now who said, you know what, I have a cold, I can't be at school, but I think I can still actually teach from home. Another pro is that there's community escalating of health risk within our community. And I outlined the zip codes in which you see there are actually deaths that are taking place across our community. Another pro to distance learning is that we are seeing a decline in in-person student attendance. So there are many of our family members and our kids who are afraid to come to school because the numbers are escalating in the community. Another pro is that there's a strong process in place for distance learning that includes daily teacher-led instruction, five days a week. So I wanted to be able to provide some pros for the board to consider. So I think that we are at a pivotal point as we consider our staff attendance. And again, these are justifiable warranted absences, and we also, as we consider our health data. We could stay in blended learning and relax our guidelines to allow more kids to be in a place at a time. Or we could make modifications to any one of the 31 CDC guidelines. What we can't do is magically make people appear to fill those positions. We have tried. We have worked hard at it. Everyone has worked hard at it. Other districts are dealing with this, as well as other institutions like hospitals. We could return to distance learning, which would offer our kids five days of instruction provided by their teachers. And we could think about scheduling that to happen starting at about November 23rd, which would give parents at least about a week and a half to make arrangements to prepare for distance learning. We could pivot to distance learning pretty easily, and this would be right before the Thanksgiving break. We could then consider coming back in December. I'm not sure that that's enough time for us to really have a look at the data, to have two weeks' worth of data or 14 days to say, okay, things are much better now, we can go back to in-person learning. Just recognizing that in December, there are three weeks before the winter break. So between Thanksgiving and the winter break, there are three weeks. Or we could decide to go into distance learning on November the 23rd to return in January at the end of the second quarter and the beginning of the second semester, which would be a natural transition or break. So those are just some considerations for the board to think about in summary as we look at the health data for the community by zip code, the health data for our district, as well as our staffing capability. And at this point in time, we will turn it over to you for any questions you may have for the CPS team or our partners with Children's Hospital and the Cincinnati Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you to our two guest speakers who we're going to ask to help us to address some of the questions that board members specifically have. And just for the board, in terms of process, thought to suggest that maybe we open this part of the agenda up to us asking questions of our experts. Not so much discussion, but open it up for questions. And we did have a sheet of questions where I'm happy to say all seven board members added to. So if our experts have copies, did you all get copies? Maybe we can start with these and then open it up for board members additional questions. And then we'll follow that by the hearing of the public. And then after hearing of the public, we can have discussion about the information that's presented by the superintendent. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, great. Dr. Khan and Dr.? Thank you, I'm sorry. All right. So do you have the sheet with the questions on it? Do you want us to just read them, or how do you want to?
Yeah, why don't you read them? And if you want to prioritize them, we can, depending on time. But and then Dr. Amin and I have sort of checked which ones each one of us have the best position to answer.
Wonderful. I'm just going to go down the list, and the person assigned to these questions can ask. They can prioritize. Ms. Bates, you're the first one.
Well, my question is, we submitted questions, so can we get those answered?
Yeah.
That's what, no, yeah, they have the question. They're asking us if we want to just basically read the question, and you can prioritize if you want those questions answered or not.
Oh, okay. I assume that that would just be covered.
Yeah. Or I'm happy to read your question. I just felt more natural for you to be asking me rather than me.
Okay. Well, you can go ahead.
Sure. So the first question was with regard to the color-coded alert system reflecting a virus in the community. And essentially, why are we tying the color alert system to our openings and closures? And would it make more sense to develop our own CPS metric, possibly school by school, classroom by classroom? And the perception being that we're potentially sending students and staff from a safe environment into the community where spread is increasing. And so I took that essentially as like, what about the state color coding system? Is it relevant and still to what we're doing with schools? And I think a couple of thoughts on that. One would be even from Governor DeWine, that that color coding was never meant to be the guiding force for districts opening or not. So number one, I think it's, he would say it's wide open to other inputs. I think the second piece is what we found is in its breadth, it's not the most sensitive, specific, timely, or well-sourced data for guiding school opening and closing. And so in part, if you look at the document the two county commissioners led on, we mention OFIS, and we say you can take it under consideration, but because it's a bundle of seven complicated measures, it's probably not the cleanest, sharpest way to guide a school opening. And so there are districts who are pulling away from using that as their central guiding light. And I'll just say, strangely, as an example, the hospitalization data in that metric, there's relatively little relationship to the actual experience of hospitalization data going on in the region, as one example. The second question relates to, do we have updated data from other Hamilton County districts and school systems in terms of a comparison about systems that are fully remote, hybrid, four-day, or five-day? It depends a little bit on which data you're looking for. Oh, actually, you were going to lead on this, but I'll go ahead and do my piece and then yours, which would be, as I touched on earlier, in terms of how are the other districts doing and how are they arranged? We like to focus on the outcome first in general. As I said earlier, very little in-school transmission. And there is some level of variability across those districts where some are really at the three to six-foot spacing and still seeing very little within-school transmission to the extent they're testing. Now, they're having a tremendous amount of quarantining because anything under six feet leads to a fair amount of quarantining. That being said, there is no fantastic dataset that says for every district, what is the outcome and what's that variation in how you're doing things? And that's something, working with CPS leadership, we're trying to get five or seven superintendents on the phone every other Friday and say, can you please tell us your data and build that information for you? Dr. Amin has a little more information about some of the private schools.
So we've also been working with the non-public schools since they've opened up in August. We have seen a few cases where we are suggestive of in-school transmission, but they are going all in-person, and their protocols vary. But I think overall, since considering they've been open since August, they've done a really tremendous job of keeping everyone safe. And they often are quarantining the whole classroom, just depending on the scenario.
Ms. Bolton asked several questions, and I'll take the first one and then turn it over to Dr. Amin. What are our best considered assumptions regarding the lifespan of this virus COVID? We know it is with us through the school year. What might be the ebb and flow across the year and the coming calendar year? And I double-checked with some of our infectious disease specialists, and they basically said it's going to take a year to know what kind of a virus this is. Is it seasonal? To what degree do we get to herd immunity? And then on top of that, what is the pace at which vaccines will become available and spread throughout the community? So best estimation is by spring or summer, we'll hopefully see, is it diminishing and is vaccines starting to get out there? But really impossible to say at the moment what the lifespan or what the cadence of infection will be. Is it going to be like the flu or some of the other fluctuating over time?
So I will answer the question of, is it too early to determine if we are experiencing or motivating spread within our schools? And I don't think that's the case. I think, as we've seen earlier, that there isn't within-school transmission beyond the two people that we've mentioned. The next question is, are there additional ways in protocol or equipment that we could better protect our employees? Though I think within the school setting, the protocols have been very outstanding. I think they've been followed very well. And as we're looking at the metrics daily, that we've seen great successes. I would say in the after-school and home setting, I think we just want to make sure that we continue that message to families that now is not the time to resume normal activities and to make sure that when you are doing after-school activities, that same thought process of maintaining distancing and limiting the number of people that are within close proximity is kept. Also, it's important that the families talk with the Health Department and are able to provide as much information as possible because everyone is, the end goal is to reduce transmission. So it's very key that the families work with us. So I would say that's probably the part that we need to make sure is the continued message.
Couple additional questions from Ms. Bolton. Are there, do you know of folks, any other folks, medical experts or organizations that are overseeing or advising local school districts? It wasn't exactly clear like in what capacity, if it's around the metrics, and how to use those metrics to guide school opening?
Yeah, I think that would do, my interest is making sure the public knows that we're so fortunate to have you and that kind of credibility and expertise. So are there other districts that you know of that are getting guidance? I won't say as good a guidance because that'll make you go along.
You know, my sense is there are informal relationships going on around the country, but relatively uniquely, there's only so many children's hospitals and so many excellent citywide health departments in partnership. And we really see the kids that you serve as the same kids we're seeing at Children's and in the community through our practices. So I think it is a unique and special tie that we have here. There is sort of national guidance out there, but it really lags behind, and it lags the evidence base. So to be able to partner directly with you and generate data every day, as someone mentioned, 7:30 a.m. every day, we've got eight, 10 people on the phone going through every single case, every single close contact. I think there's no substitute for that kind of detail. In terms of what more medical, health, and safety public information needs to be shared to help citizens fight COVID, I think, just building on what Dr. Amin said, like now is not the time to let down. like now is not the time to let down and we've just got to tighten the hatches even more. I think with Thanksgiving coming, you know, it is, it is amazing how this virus does not relent. And it will find every opening it can to get through, as I said earlier, the Swiss cheese. And so really communicating how, how can we elevate that it's the kids that should be at school? And whatever other sacrifices need to be made, need to be made so the kids can safely get back at school. And one of the things I'm noticing is we got kind of inured to some of the morbidity that's going on. And just today, for the first time, there was a very important story, I thought, where inside the university hospital, they brought in reporters to talk to ICU nurses, surgeons, and others at UC. And bringing forth those stories of what it's like to be on the front line reminded me of New York City stories early on where really, there was, there was a fear of this virus imparted in us and this notion that we could run out of ECMO machines, we could run out of ICU beds at the pace we're going, unless we take, it's seriously both at home and when we're out in the community. Just a, Ms. Bowers had a question, how would the experts rate our safety precautions looking at our data and the effectiveness of keeping students and staff safe? And I'll just say, as I said earlier, I think the absence of transmission speaks volumes. The fact that there is not a single excess case of COVID among kids as a result of having come and sat in the classroom speaks to the tenacity and the resolute use of protective behaviors in this, across the 60-plus Cincinnati public schools. So really best in class in my mind.
So the next question is talking about communities of color negatively disproportionately affected by COVID-19 for reasons due to life circumstances, population density, multigenerational households, job status, frontline workers, insufficient or no health insurance, pre-existing conditions. Given these facts, what are you, or what can you tell us about the community trends related to these demographics in upsurge or decline in COVID-19 in communities of color as compared to other communities? So very early on, we did see an increase in cases in our African-American population. Currently, we are seeing that actually white population have a greater percent. They're about 40% of total cases and African-Americans are at about 37%. So pretty close in terms of total cases. Where we're still seeing the disparity is related to deaths and hospitalizations. The hospitalizations, I believe, are probably at 65%. Don't quote me on that yet. But, and then for, for the, for the deaths, the African-Americans have a greater percent. Some of the things that we do at the health department when we're on the phone with the positive cases and the families, if they need any type of service, we have our partners that work with us as well as our internal staff. Let's say if, you know, if somebody's in need of food, we can help guide them to, to our partners that can help provide them food during their isolation or quarantine period. So we are trying our best to work with the communities in terms of anything that they need during this time.
Jones asked, please clarify the terms asymptomatic and antibodies and what these terms mean for student and staff who might have these COVID experiences. Students and staff are asymptomatic. Would they show symptoms? Could they actually expose others before showing up symptoms? And how long might they expose others before being asymptomatic? So asymptomatic and presymptomatic can be a little tricky. You cannot discern the two. So at any given time, someone can be infectious and have zero symptoms. And it's essentially why we talk about universal mask-wearing if you're outside the house or with, or with anyone outside of your household. Approximately, there's an estimate nationally, about 40% of all the transmissions are from an asymptomatic person. So you didn't realize that they were contagious because they had no symptoms. We, when we have a positive case, we assume that they've been infectious for at least 48 hours prior to that test being taken. And so as we trace close contacts and as we talk to teachers and trace the students' paths, Dr. Amin could speak to it further, but trying to understand what has been the past over the prior, the past, over the prior 48 hours to ensure any possible close contacts along that has been done. The antibodies are still an emerging story, like very early on, everyone was really excited about antibodies as sort of a marker that you're going to be immune. It doesn't perfectly correlate with your immunity. The antibody tests, I think, are still to be proven. And there's all sorts of ways your body generates an immune response, antibodies only being one of them. But I think the main message to come out of your question would be, assume people could be an asymptomatic positive, whether you're at Lowe's, Kroger, or at a restaurant downtown and wear your mask as often and frequently as you, as you can.
So the next question is asking that it's very concerning that with the Thanksgiving break approaching, people may choose to engage in unsafe activities. For example, meeting in large groups, traveling. Are there thoughts or projections regarding data trends that might influence a safe return to school after the holiday weekend? So it is, there's definitely a concern. We, over, you know, the holidays over the last few months, during the Fourth of July, we did see an increase in cases. Labor Day, we did not as much. I think, you know, people were practicing safe, safe distances, engaging outside. I think there's greater risk when they're practicing or the activities are happening indoors. One of the things that we are suggesting is if people do want to gather, if they are able to get tested prior to that gathering. If they are not going to get tested, but they would like to still engage, if they could wear masks when they're inside, if they, you know, can try to keep their distances. Or I know it's a lot easier said than done, but to try to hold off on those activities if you feel that it's just not safe for the families or friends.
And I'll just point out, Dr. Fauci commented that in fact, he's not doing Thanksgiving with his kids. My, my family and one other family have done Thanksgiving together for almost 60 years. This will be the first time in 60 years we haven't gotten together for Thanksgiving as two families. The community indicators continue to surge upward. Yet surprisingly, we haven't reached the purple level. Any idea why? And again, I think that speaks back to that, that OFIS system has certain strengths as a general indicator. I think what was surprising to all of us when we all thought we would go purple was that the hospital indicator and I think the outpatient visit indicator didn't go upwards. And I think that's a function of the source of that, that data as not being fully accurate in where they source it. I'll just jump ahead and do the next one so we reduce our back and forth here. From Mr. Lindy, what are the decision rules you'd recommend we use in making these decisions going forward? Have they changed at all since summer? And if so, why? And noting that at least one suburban school district, Sycamore, has announced it will no longer, that it will continue to have in-person instruction even if the county goes purple. And I hope the, the body of my presentation, presentation spoke to that, that I think the, the primary decision-making should be based on metrics of how it's going in the school and a secondary is in the community. That being said, if you look carefully at what's going on in the school, it specifically mentions what are the ripple effects of quarantine leading to staff absences? And I guess that'll be a part of your ongoing discussion. So staff absences are likely to be an example of a key consideration, even more so than before we start seeing a lot of in-school transmission as an indicator.
The next question is asking, what do you believe are the metrics that would make remote learning the best option and have we met them? So I think as we've, you know, discussed tonight, that probably the in-school transmission is our best indicator for what's happening within the school versus what's happening in the community. The next question is, based on current data and trends, would you feel safe if your spouse teaching or working in CPS? CPS in-person or, sorry, working at CPS in-person schools? Yes, I would feel safe. I think my spouse is working with extracurricular activities and I feel that he is safe in that environment and I would feel safe if he were working with CPS.
There was one additional question from Mr. Lindy. Given what you're learning about the virus, how it's transmitted, the costs of having students in virtual instruction, do you think CPS should be open five days a week in person with all kids? Why or why not? Do you think we should be fully virtual or somewhere in the middle? That feels like a heavy load to put on me as the pediatrician. But here's what I, I will say, which is I think obviously that decision loads a couple of really important things. One is the strict COVID health piece and the other is the trade-offs in, in education. And I'm committed to just speaking about where I'm an expert, a relative expert, which would be in the health piece. So I don't think I can answer Mr. Lindy's question directly. I think the COVID contribution to that, that balance scale you're doing would be if you had everybody in and they are at less than six feet, the quarantine you have effect right now would increase, right? Because every individual case would now generate many additional kids who would have to go into quarantine because they're at three to six feet, if I understand it correctly. So if you were here five days a week and you had to push down to less than six feet, what it would mean from a public health standpoint is more kids would be in quarantine. So I'm just trying to answer the, the part of that question that I think is relevant to public health. Mr. Messer also asked, based on current data and trends, would you feel safe sending your children to CPS for live in-person learning? And I would say yes. I have a son in, in a high school. He's there at the moment in a hybrid situation and they are similarly embracing the kind of protective measures that you are doing. They, they don't get the testing that you have for, for kids or staff. So I think in some sense, your environment is even a safer environment for kids in the current scenario than ours. Mr. Maraski asked, what is the long-term effect of COVID on kids? And I think it's just not known yet, right? I don't think there's, there's enough kids over enough long-term period who have gotten COVID. Obviously, there are some, a very small percentage, but importantly, have a serious inflammatory condition. I think we also have to understand what are the long-term effects, indirects effects on COVID on kids, which is the mental health piece, the isolation. He also, Mr. Ruske also asked, should we close? I'll just return back to that prior explanation. And a final question posed was, so do we have enough data to say schools in urban areas are safe since most are closed and that most of the data is coming from rural suburban districts? And I would say there is no existing high-quality dataset of comparable urban districts in which we could say, here's where Cincinnati stands compared to 10 other very similar districts. I just, I don't see that emerging even after eight or nine months. That being said, I'd go back to where we were earlier, which is I think you have your own very good, excellent data to know is it safe or not for the kids and for the staff. So thank you all for submitting. We asked that you submit the question beforehand so we could try to give higher quality answers. We really appreciate your questions in advance.
Well, thank you, Dr. Khan, and thank you, Dr. Amin. However, before you leave, I'd like to ask board members if they have any additional questions that have come up after the presentation. Mr. Maraski?
Thank you, President Jones, and thank you, doctors, so much. It was extremely a great presentation. There are a lot of things that made me happy in it. There are a lot of things that concerned me in it. But I net out at the same place I always net out. My questions, I have a few questions, but they're all about the same thing. But I think they're all kind of different. And they're about the fact that kids are largely asymptomatic and that we know the viral loads in a healthy-looking kid are higher than a sick adult in the hospital, meaning they're walking around with high viral loads of this virus. So my question is, the first part of my question would be, how, how can we say there isn't student-to-teacher transmission if we're not testing? And this could be for administration too, whoever is comfortable answering it. If we're not testing every student, how can we say that with great confidence?
I don't say we can, I don't think we can say it with perfection. I don't think anyone anywhere can say with perfection because nobody's testing every student, every, every teacher, every day.
Okay.
I will just add, just the comment about the viral load, in terms of transmission, I would just say that the kids under 10 in general, whatever their viral load, do seem to be lower transmitters than those who are older, but.
Awesome. Thank you.
I also want to add, for the 70 students who were, are positive that have come out since October, that half of them have been in school and then half of them were not in school. So they could have potentially, you know, they could have potentially been infectious while they were in school. But we haven't found that that transmission has happened. Just another piece of information.
I appreciate that. And then my second one, actually, I think I got my second of three answered, so I only have one more. This is pretty wonky and I apologize. So again, back to this piece, it's this different side of the same coin of kids being largely asymptomatic and that we're not seeing transmission in the schools, which is fantastic. I'm curious, though, that if kids are asymptomatic and theoretically, since we can't say with confidence they're not getting it in school and they go home in a multi-general, multi-generational home in one of these blue areas where we're seeing the black population being ravaged by this virus, have, is there any data that shows COVID transmission in childless homes versus homes with children? You see where I'm getting with this? My point being, I just, I still, I just, I have so many, there's so many, we hope this or we think this, and I appreciate all of the presentations and the data. But do we know that some of these older folks getting this virus are not getting it because of asymptomatic kids? If we don't have datasets that say childless homes versus homes with kids in schools that are going in person, and not trying to be too wonky, but I do think it's important and we're going to have to make a decision and it's not an easy one to make. So I'm just curious if that data exists or not and if my question makes sense.
Who are you asking?
I'll do, I'll do my best. I, I think that data doesn't exist. I have not seen a study comparing childless homes and homes with kids in it and then among kids who are remote learning only versus being in school.
Okay.
I think there are data that try to study in communities, if schools are remote or not, has that affected the rates of community incidents? And my sense is in California, they found a terribly minor effect of it. But otherwise, other studies have not shown any effect of schools in or not in on otherwise, say, adult community rates. And I'm happy to also try to work with our team back at Children's to identify any more recent epidemiologic literature to help you.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Board members have other questions for Dr. Khan, Dr. Amin, or the superintendent, or leadership team, Ms. Bolton?
Just a quick follow-up to what you just said, doctor. Do the California study or, or data says what we think?
Why don't I try to get that and write a brief synopsis of it in Cincy? I don't want to misquote it. My, my sense was, and again, I'll pull the study, maybe a very small increase in community rates when kids are in school in this one study in California. But as, as we know, one study is one study. In California, it's California. California is not Ohio or Pennsylvania.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I just want to put an exclamation point on the note of appreciation. I mean, just the fact that you're on a call every day at 7:30 to help our children and help our staff for this district. It's just absolutely unbelievable and I know we all appreciate that. You're here spending your evening to help us think through this. And I just think it's just such a great thing and a service that you're doing to the people of Cincinnati Public Schools. So thank you.
I just want to use that to shout out for our, our larger teams because there's a number of folks on and, and I know they're all working very hard with you. Thank you.
Okay, we have Ms. Bates and Ms. Bowers and Mr. Lindy. Go ahead, Ms. Bates.
I have a question. You had a pretty quick turnover for student tests at Children's Hospital. Are you doing the rapid test or the PCR? Because what I'm hearing from reliable people in the community, it's taken them a week to get their PCR results back. And they don't know whether or not to quarantine or to notify people to quarantine. So are our children getting priority? Is that why the turnover is so quick or are they just getting the rapid?
Yeah, they're getting the PCR test. And luckily, our leader of our lab, Dr. Paul Steele, has worked closely with the school nurses and a courier system to do pickups twice a day across the schools, batch them through a couple batches overnight and to report out in the morning. So it is the PCR. It's not the rapid antigen test that has some problems with false negatives, but just really sort of extraordinary performance all the way through, like literally. but just really sort of extraordinary performance all the way through, like literally each step of the way. We're trying to figure out how to optimize it.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Amin and Dr. Khan for all the data and answering all of those questions and for a fantastic partnership. I'd also like to thank our CPS staff for being effective in identifying us as an A-rated ability to keep our students and staff safe. And the only other thing I want to do is thank the superintendent for giving us the information regarding the pros for the blended learning models and for us to, you know, brew over it for consideration.
Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. And I want to echo very briefly the thanks for Dr. Khan and Dr. Amin and Superintendent Mitchell for all of their work. I learned a lot tonight and I'm very grateful that our district has a chance to work with you all. I think the only question I still have is, can either of you talk about what you'd want to see in terms of whatever data you think would be most relevant? For us to have kids back five days and assume that there would be cases where we couldn't do sick, we just couldn't figure out the six-feet separation? Like, is there a, is there a context where you would feel comfortable with that?
Hopefully, it's okay for me to mention this. The data I've been curious about from the start, I think, speaks a little to what Mr. Maraski asked earlier, which is, how would we know if there are other asymptomatic kids that are out there? And how would we know if there's more transmission than we thought from an index case? And so I think there is a study that's going to begin out of Columbus across multiple districts in the state to do rapid antigen testing of close contacts. And so especially those who are at, say, three to six feet and will otherwise have to be home for an extended period, can we generate enough evidence across the state that in fact, there's a very low positivity rate among those close contacts? And so could we begin to say it's okay to get to three to six feet? And again, it's always been a spectrum. It's never been like this threshold at three feet, you're in terrible danger. At six feet, you're perfectly safe. It is a spectrum, though this idea of, could we test all close contacts repeatedly over, say, a one-week period and be sure that there's relatively little transmission at three to six feet? I think that's the kind of study that needs to get done. It's not an easy study to do and requires a lot of, a lot of participation and consent by many to get it done. Is that helpful?
Just to clarify, so the thought is, day at six feet until we have some kind of study that would have some data on what happens with kids and teachers when it's less than six feet?
Yes, you said it much more concisely than I did. It would be great to know. Transmission, there is no transmission at three to six feet when kids are well, well masked to truly feel safer at getting back five days a week in a place where you can't be at six feet.
I think that the thing that's motivating my question is, and what's also challenging about this is you just hear all of these anecdotal pieces from schools all over Cincinnati, private charter district, urban, suburban, doing every range of possibilities, including having kids back since August without six-feet separation. They just use masks and dividers when kids like can't get to six feet. And we have, we have schools, you know, Walnut is one, where kids haven't been back in person all year, you know? And I think this question of, you know, I'd like to get kids back in person as soon as we can do it safely. And so I'm trying to figure out what that point is. And what I hear you saying is, we wait until there's a study that gives data on that.
Or, you know, again, from a, from a health side, or we learn our way into it. How could we learn together with you whether three to six feet is safe? Open to the possibilities for further discussion about that.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Khan, Dr. Amin. If the board doesn't have any more questions, we're going to move on to hearing of the public, after which we can open up for discussion and consideration of the points that the superintendent made. Okay, so we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being transparent and open as possible, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening the video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here again are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. Members of the public who wish to speak during the board meeting must make requests through the chat feature, including your name, your full name, affiliation to the district, school, community, and contact information for response to questions. This request models standard practice if we were meeting in person in the Ed Center. Treasure Wagner and Daniel Hoyn will be our timekeepers. Once the request has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the visibility icon to go interactive. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. And I believe, Treasure Wagner, we have, how many speakers? Thirty?
I think it's 32. Dan, is that correct?
Thirty-two?
That's, that's right.
Okay. All right, so we're ready.
Our first speaker is Shona Carpenter, followed by David Brenner and Sean Kelly. Go ahead, Ms. Carpenter.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes, I'm, my name is Shona Carpenter. I am the grandparent of a wonderful third grader at Fairview Cliff and German. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions regarding staff testing. You guys say every five weeks for testing, and that's a little troubling for me because in the course of five weeks, a lot can happen with this virus. So that's my first question. I would just like to give a general statement. I understand these decisions are not easy, but you have to take the children and also your staff into consideration. We just ask that as, you know, community stakeholders, grandparents, parents, teachers, all the way down to janitors and whoever else, just please take that into consideration. You know, maybe considering remote because it sounds like there were a lot of pros to going remote. But I also understand you have to do what's best for all. And just quickly, I wanted to bring to you guys attention, there's a group of young people, young CPS students called Young Activist Coalition. They want to have some sort of conversation with you guys. And just pay them some attention and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is David Brenner, followed by Sean Kelly. Go ahead, Mr. Brenner.
Thank you for the time. A few weeks ago, this board and administration decided to move our students and teachers back to the building for a hybrid model. Unfortunately, the options that were given to our families for 100% remote option are inadequate. So many of us returned our children to school because that was the really, only the real option for continuing their education, despite the fact we were putting our families at risk. Choosing between education and the safety of elderly or immune-compromised family members is a terrible choice for you to have forced upon us. It's not all bad. For those in school, from a process standpoint, it's been going well and my children are benefiting from being back in school. Hats off to our teachers and staff for that. From a risk standpoint, there are still serious concerns from our families. Dewine's press conference Monday was sobering. The number of cases in Ohio has been rising dramatically. ICU beds are filling and we are getting past our ability to contract trace. In Hamilton County, cases have also been rising at an alarming rate. There's had been significant number of confirmed cases with teachers and students. Quite a few members of our school communities have been forced to quarantine because of exposure. At the beginning of the year, the plan was to go remote between Thanksgiving and New Year's. We need to shut down now, just a couple of weeks early. Our CPS community is at risk. Increasing rates will impact learning the more we are exposing people. Additionally, to support our students' mental health, they need some sense of normalcy outside of school. Medical experts are suggesting quarantine for two weeks before meeting with family gatherings during the holidays. This is impossible while our children are at school. The surge is starting. You have the power to shut things down and go back to 100% remote. While it isn't perfect, it was working. You plan to go remote anyway. Do it early to protect our school communities and the entire region. Failing to do so while infection rates are increasing is irresponsible and you will be responsible for contributing to more illness and death. Let's keep our students from going to a funeral for grandma instead of going to holiday dinner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There is Sean Kelly, followed by Emily H. Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Just two quick things, the-
Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kelly, please click on visibility.
Oh, I see it now. Okay, sorry. My computer is trying to protect me. Just two quick things. Thank you for the time. I have four students in CPS and communication throughout all of this is just, it's so key. Everyone is aware that there are no easy answers for all of you, for the district, for the teachers, staff, families. What I can suggest, and I'll give you one perfect example. Mr. Sipple at Fairview German does an incredible job of communicating consistently. He has from the very beginning, from back in the spring of, he makes it fun and the parents, the students know what's going on. I don't feel that as much on the high school side. I understand it's a different population, but parents still need consistent communication. The second thing is, I understand there is a new parent liaison or coordinator for the district. I'm just wondering how that's been presented out to the parents and families so that everyone knows that that is an available resource? And then finally, just to know also that the impact this is having on students, not being in a regular school environment is real. It is, not saying that it's the only reason to try to get everyone back on campus full-time, but they are feeling disjointed. I actually had three of my kids in a debate earlier today about whether or not they actually had school tomorrow. And they were serious because they each had a different opinion of whether they actually had school tomorrow. So just the fact that those conversations are happening where an off day isn't even considered, they don't even know about it necessarily. Anyway, thank you for your time. Communication, consistent communication across the district and from all of the buildings is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emily Holdscall, followed by Lauren Nagel, followed by Lauren Sample. Go ahead, Ms. Holdscall.
Hi, my name is Emily Holdscall. I am a Clark and Dieter Montessori parent.
Ms. Holdscall, could you please click the visibility icon?
Oh, I did. Let's try it again.
I'm sorry?
I had clicked it. Oh, there I am. Great. Can you see me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Emily Holdscall. I'm a Clark and Dieter Montessori parent. I really appreciate you allowing teachers to support the virtual, the fully virtual students. We're a fully virtual family and we feel like we've been heard, that we need this. I have one request. Can we please have our enrichment classes back? My daughter was told she could not attend her enrichment class and it just broke her heart. That's her favorite teacher. And that teacher in particular is holding virtual meetings, but she's not allowed to attend. I think that's not right. It hasn't been easy to this point. We struggle sometimes with the fully virtual, but it's very important for our high-risk family. I've been emailing my concerns to this point, but I feel it's really important to speak tonight to advocate for the teachers. And one data point, you said there was 89 teacher cases and then somebody else said there was a much higher amount of teachers out. My children's teachers have personally expressed to me that they are concerned for their own safety, but they're also afraid to lose their jobs and are afraid to speak out. Please allow our teachers to be safe and go back to fully virtual as soon as possible. We have exceeded all the data criteria that was originally set and it's just getting scarier by the day. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren, excuse me, Logan Nagel, followed by Lauren Sample, followed by Leslie Mooney. Go ahead, Logan.
Hello, thank you. There we go. I wanted to speak today about two things, mainly the idea of signal and noise when it comes to data. I'm a sixth-grade math teacher in Cincinnati Public. And when it comes to noise, here's, you know, my little bit of that. It's personal, I feel, I guess it's visceral, but that's the nature of noise when it comes to data. I had a student today fall ill and it took approximately 20 minutes to get them out of my classroom because the nurse was overwhelmed with cases across the school. This is no one's fault, no one's malpractice, nothing of the sort. But it was just the nature of the beast today and it was unfortunate and it broke my heart. When it comes to a signal, I think that the best kind of signal we can go and look for, especially as a math teacher, is data. So I have a QR code here. This is, I mean, we're already pretty familiar with the Hamilton County data, but if you want to take a moment and scan that with your phone, it'll just take you to the most current Hamilton County data. If you go there, you're going to notice that there are different color-coded recommendations for the schools. This is not the Ohio rankings. It doesn't go to purple. But it has a very clear indicator for all of us, from the CDC and the Harvard Global Health Center, that at the rate of transmission we currently have, it is time for us to return to remote learning. I believe that's a very strong signal. I believe that everyone's personal stories matter. But I do also think that when we have a clear directive such as this from experts, we should follow it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lauren Sample, followed by Leslie Mooney, followed by Gillian Whitaker. Go ahead, Ms. Sample.
Okay, hi. I'm a parent of two at Hyde Park School. And I just wanted to say, I thought this, the meeting tonight was great. It was very refreshing to hear an emotional, just data, and it was really promising. I mean, I'm very happy to hear that there is data showing that schools are not spreading COVID. You know, kids aren't spreading it to each other and clearly, kids are safe at school. CPS is doing a great job. Our individual school is doing an excellent job. I did notice, though, Dr. Khan said that they have been working with five, either five total or five other districts beyond, besides CPS and that some of them are using distancing of three feet. So I recognize that at this point, I think a big, our big driver now is staffing issues. And, you know, I, that sounds like that might be a possibility, right? If, as needed, if we relaxed and went to three feet of distance, you could combine two classes. You know, if one of the second grade, first grade teachers are out, then, you know, you could combine two classes and keep three feet of distance as needed and keep the blended model versus going to all remote. So again, this, that, the data is really encouraging. I would love to see us go back five days, but at a minimum, please keep us in the blended that we do have. I have a kindergartner and remote learning is just not sustainable for kindergarten. And I really, really hope that we keep the kids back in school because they are safe there, as has been shown. They are safe in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sample. Our next speaker is Leslie Mooney, followed by Gillian Whitaker. Go ahead, Ms. Mooney.
As the speaker said, I took a lot of notes during the data presentation tonight, which I thought was incredible. And we are so fortunate, as you all noted, to have Children's Hospital involved with the district. So kudos to all of you for working on that. It is very good to hear that the in-school transmission is consistent with national data and actually international data. And so prioritizing a return to five days needs to start happening now and so that we can look towards the next semester as opposed to next school year, 2021, 2022, to actually having our kids back in school five days a week, which is the most equitable policy for, particularly for the younger grades and for students with- which is the most equitable policy for, particularly for the younger grades and for students with disabilities. And so I just wouldn't, I would urge the, the district, and I'm sure that you are, but, um, publicly urge you guys to, to start looking towards next semester as well. I know you have a decision to make now and for the remainder of this semester. Um, and it sounds like the data show health-wise, um, that staying in the blended model is the right thing to do, the right decision to make for this point in time. Um, and so I just would, would, uh, second that. And, um, just, you know, just so that you know, and I'll kind of second what Sean Kelly said and some others, but the impact on students not being in the building is very real. Uh, we're feeling it very acutely in our house with a nine-year-old who's suffering from some severe emotional, um, and depression issues. Um, and this is in a house with a lot of parental engagement and support. And so, as I've said for the last six months, um, I'm more concerned for the broader community in that regard. But, um, from a personal aside, our nine-year-old is struggling immensely, and we also have an eight-year-old, a five-year-old and a three-year-old in the house who are being affected by that as well. So I appreciate your time this evening, and, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gillian Whitaker, followed by John Klingler, and then Kendra Phelps. Go ahead, Ms. Whitaker.
And offered up our kids a guinea pigs to see if we can do less than six feet of distance, especially when...
Excuse me, Ms. Whitaker, please click the visibility icon.
I did. Sorry. I'll do it again.
Thank you.
Can you see me?
No, we can't.
Wait, there you go. Okay. Could you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I don't understand why all of the metrics that were put into place in order to keep students and staff safe have been drawn out the window and disregarded. Like, this sounds like Donald Trump math, the things that we're hearing in here. And I just cannot believe that you guys are able to sit here and say it with a straight face. Uh, how do we know that there are no cases of school transmission when asymptomatic kids aren't tested? Having been found proof of transmission is completely different than having disproven proof of transmission. We're supposed to have a study decline in confirmed cases. The city of Cincinnati has seen an average daily increase of ninety-six cases per day. In the last week, CPS has had thirty-eight confirmed cases, a number that I know is not up to date considering I saw at least five emails today from two different schools. Um, I would also like to ask again for a breakdown of the data that shows the attendance for each school for blended versus virtual. From what I've been hearing, attendance is much, much lower than what is being projected in these meetings. So if you could email that to us, um, I would really appreciate it. I also don't understand why you haven't updated your definition of close contact per CDC guidelines. Maybe Dr. Khan can answer that. Uh, I've asked this question several times with no response. Um, currently, the city of Cincinnati has a positivity rate of six point two percent. Uh, Hamilton County, where many students and teachers live, has a higher grade. We've been in the red for weeks, and I know now all of a sudden these codes don't matter to you, but they matter to everyone who signed that remote commitment form or who did not sign that remote commitment form because you made a contract with the parents saying this is what we will do when these things happen. And these students and these parents made decisions based on your promises that you are now reneging on. There are parents in schools who are being threatened with truancy officers because they haven't sent their school, kids into school because they don't feel safe. That is the most unacceptable thing I have ever heard in my life. You need to make some good decisions tonight, and I really hope that you do. Um, a lot of other districts that are held up as poster children by the five-day-a-week crowd are going fully remote. Milford, Oak Hills High School, Deer Park, et cetera. The numbers you're giving are not what I'm hearing from the students and teachers, and I don't think your data is accurate. And so we also ask...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sample. Your time is up. Thank you.
Not a sample.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name's John, and the main thing that I would like to communicate, uh, tonight is that teachers, by and large, feel completely unheard, unappreciated, expendable, and emotionally exhausted. Uh, all the data coming from children's in the city and CPS central office is important, but we are the ones who have direct insight into how this is all playing out for students and staff inside of the buildings. And teachers across the district know that this blended model is not working, and that's separate from the very legitimate health and safety concerns. For example, the statistic laid out that attendance is about the same as it was during remote learning. Talk to any teacher across the district, and they will tell you that that is not an accurate assessment of what is going on in terms of engagement because attendance is no longer based on whether students are with the teachers. And when students aren't with teachers, very little learning is happening. At the high school level, most of our classes have one to six students of them, uh, in them, in the classroom. And this is exactly why the number of cases hasn't spread within schools it more than it has because there are so few kids at a cla- in a class at a time. If we suddenly had good attendance, even hybrid model good attendance, those case numbers would go up fast. Additionally, as you saw from the data, we don't have the staffing to go on as we have been. Tons of teachers are having to quarantine, which means even more students are going without instruction. And teachers are being pulled, the coverage teachers that are out of the building, who could be teaching if they were remote but can't in this blended model. Worst of all, week to week, we never know what is going to be going on in the near future. This constant state of uncertainty is extremely emotionally exhausting, and it's something I can't describe to you in two minutes, but you might be able to get a more accurate picture by reading the emails sent to you from school staffs across the district today. We need you to make a decision now that will be binding for at least the rest of the semester, and it needs to be that we go remote personally by the end of the week, at least.
Thank you, Mr. Klingler.
Our next speaker is Kendra Phelps, followed by Maggie Nelson, followed by Kim Tobin. Go ahead, Ms. Phelps.
Good evening, board members. I'm Kendra Phelps, teacher leader with CFT. I wanted to speak to you about the option for students to be fully remote at their homeschool that a significant number of our families have expressed an interest in. We were not surprised by their interest. As a matter of fact, last March, and during the development of the district remote learning plan, teachers, principals, and parents suggested that we plan for that option. However, we were shocked to hear that the responsibility to develop that plan was thrust upon school staffs in the midst of first semester. Even more disheartening is the thought that they could do this successfully without the resources and staff needed. Furthermore, the idea that a student can sit and watch learning instead of participate in it is not educationally sound. Also, the thought that a building staff can create a plan that is effective and meets the needs of students in one week was very disrespectful. We are asking for support for the schools. They need resources and technology to be able to do, um, the remote learning, uh, option at school well. They need staff to be able to engage with these students via Google Meets. And they need the district's facilitation to collaborate, for them to collaborate, um, between schools when they only have a few students in certain grade levels that, um, are desiring the remote option. So I, uh, the, our call is for communication and collaboration in order to do things well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maggie Nelson, followed by Kim Tobin, followed by Steph Schroyer. Go ahead, Ms. Nelson.
Hi. I'm a teacher and a parent. Although I'm not sure if I'm still a CPS parent since we chose to withdraw a preschool student because there's no remote option for her. Any consideration of going remote does not seem to be on, in keeping us safe. Rather, it seems like you're blaming the staff. The definition of absenteeism, which is what Mr. McDowell's presentation called teacher absence is, is the practice of regularly staying away from workers' school without good reason, and I hope that word does not continue to be used. The criteria and metrics being used are constantly changing. Our lives hang in the balance until the next board meeting. Thumb staff received a link to a thought share. I read over a hundred of the thought share comments, and I can tell you that there are a lot of employees out there that feel manipulated, scared, hurt, confused, misled, and just plain exhausted. I feel the same way as a parent as well. Participants of this thought, thought share told that there will be a fall listening session, but it will take more than a listening session to repair and restore trusting relationships with your employees. The morale of your staff seems abysmally low. So besides a listening session, what actions are you planning to take to repair this broken relationship? Using words like absenteeism to describe staff like me trying to protect their families and staff that are sick or being quarantined further divides. Since keeping us safe is not the priority, how do you plan to build trust with those that feel manipulated, scared, hurt, confused, misled, and exhausted? You see that there's a problem, so what is the plan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kim Tobin, followed by Steph Schroyer, followed by Bethany Glass. Go ahead, Ms. Tobin.
My name is Kim Tobin. I'm a teacher at Dater High School. Um, sorry if you can't see me very well. I'm currently sitting in my car uh, because I just got home from taking an oxygen monitor to my best friend whose seven-week-old baby just tested positive for COVID. Please understand that this disease is very real and very personal to each and every one of us. I can't speak over the data, and I don't think I can put better words out than the teachers and many of the parents that have spoken before me. I can say to you that you currently hold my life, the life of my family, the life of my students and colleagues and friends in your hands. We keep hearing data from people that haven't set foot in a classroom. So if you choose to remain in this blended model instead of going remote, as we all know we should be doing based on the severity of cases in our county, then I would like to personally invite every single one of you, board members, superintendent, and deputy superintendents to come into my classroom, to sit with my students, to see how abysmal my attendance is every single day where I can't even get fifty percent of the fifty percent that are supposed to be there in seats. I invite you to come talk to my students who are worried and scared and don't understand why we're in school and why the adults in charge aren't doing more to protect them. I invite you to come be a part of this so you can know the real effects that being in this blended environment is having on the staff and the students in the schools. There is a narrative of positivity going around this district that is entirely false. We are not happy to be in schools. We are doing our best. We are fighting every day, but we are scared, worried, and alone. And I urge you to make the choice to keep us safe and to keep us safe through at least the end of the semester. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steph Schroyer, followed by Bethany Glass, followed by Melanie Jones. Go ahead, Ms. Schroyer.
Hi, thanks. This is, uh, my name is Steph Schroyer, and I am a parent of a ninth grader at Walnut Hills, and, uh, my other son just graduated from Walnut last year. I am urging you guys to come up with a plan for next semester. As, you know, Ben Lindy was talking about, how can we at least get Walnut into some sort of school where that they can be engaged as everyone else in the school district is becoming? Um, and then I also urge that we get to some way and get a plan and be transparent with that plan to all of us parents as to how we are going to get to a five-day-a-week-in-school, um, you know, plan and how we can get these kids back to school. And it was very encouraging to hear the doctors say that, you know, school and the school buildings are safe. You guys are doing a fantastic job. You've done a fantastic job with athletics of not spreading this, and it is a safe place for kids. And I know from my freshman who is struggling with having to go to school in his room every day that it is a better place to be in school in an environment where there's discussion and dialogue, and there's things that can be done safely. And I think that you guys have the vast majority of people to make creative solutions to have this happen. And please just be transparent and let us parents know what's going on. Someone else talked about communication, and especially with Walnut, what are we doing? And also, I would like for it to be known that really, any, and it's not virtual five days a week. Wednesdays are not a day of school with learning. They can meet with the teacher, but typically they've always done that after school when they would have a help night. So I just urge you to come up with some plans to push for five days a week next semester. Have it this school year.
Thank you.
Don't give up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bethany Glass, followed by Melanie Jones, followed by Matt Sample. Go ahead, Ms. Glass.
Hi, uh, my name is Bethany Glass. I'm a first-grade teacher at Rosaline Condon. Um, anyone who knows me knows that I love my job and graders, but I am scared. I feel like CPS is acting like this virus comes out with a tape measure and a timer. An article from the New York Times that was published in July and updated on Oc- um, October fifth says, "Evidence suggests it can traverse the length of a room and in one set of experimental conditions, remain viable for perhaps three hours." I know that my first graders are more likely than I to be asymptomatic carriers. I'm more likely to get sick. And if I need to be hospitalized, will there be a bed for me? I'm starting to feel like to some of you, I am just a number and easily replaced, but that's not how my family feels about me. I know that's not how my kids feel about me. So here is my question to the board. Would any of you be willing to come in and sub for a teacher who is out sick with COVID? And if not, then we need to reconsider what we're doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melanie Jones, followed by Matt Sample. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Hello, I am a custodial staff and a parent at Sailor Park Elementary. Um, I have a question about testing the staff. I understand why we're testing the staff, but it seems like the children outnumber the staff. So what is it when they come in and they may have it, and we've been tested, what, what good is it? And the protocol for a sick child being sent to the isolation room. If my child is sent to the isolation room and they have to be tested, and then they come back and they have a call for a sneeze, will they be tested again? I think that is extreme because that test is very uncomfortable for me, so I know it will be for my kids. And speaking as a civil service worker, we feel very unappreciated and disposable as if what we're doing is not essential to keeping the school going. We're exhausted. The workload has increased as a custodian with no extra time. Um, we're just, I mean, we need a decision to be made and to stick with it and hopefully move forward so we can get back in five days a week. And thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is... Our next speaker is Matt Sampled, followed by Owen Durico, followed by Yusuf Manir. Go ahead, Mr. Sample.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm a parent of two kids at Hyde Park School. Uh, my wife spoke earlier, but I'm actually not speaking as a parent right now. Uh, I'm speaking as somebody that I would put into the category as COVID expert. I've spoken prior board meetings. Um, my job for the last eight months has been working with Health and Human Services, uh, the emergency response arm of the US government in every state, and managing the only known COVID therapy treatments that work. I have literally spent the last nine months saving grandmothers. So I want to start off by saying thank you to Dr. Khan. There's a lot of emotion, and there should be. We're afraid. We're not getting the right information. This is the first board meeting in which we showed real data from real experts, and I applaud you guys for bringing in Dr. Khan. I also want to make a comment. You know, I think the risk is staffing, and we do need to react to that. And I think we need to take this opportunity for the next two months and think our strategy. Today, we delivered, I personally delivered, the first therapy that prevents people from going to the hospital. Hospitalization numbers are going to go down. People will get COVID starting in January next year, and I'm not talking vaccines. I'm talking drugs that treat somebody that already has it. We have to rethink, and I continue to keep my open invite to the board and the administration, part of this effort that discuss and plan and use data and address the emotion and address the people that want to be remote. We need a plan for that. But I guess what I'm trying to say, I applaud the effort tonight, and I applaud the data-driven approach. I applaud the risks around staffing, but this is a moment, if we go work to them, to pause and rethink. And again, I'm not saying this as a parent. I'm saying this is somebody that puts himself in that bucket of COVID experts. I'm saying this is somebody that puts himself in that bucket of COVID expert. And we need to embrace all those experts raising their hands and volunteering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Owen Durico, followed by Yusuf Manir, followed by Hannah S. Go ahead, Owen.
All right, am I both audible and visible?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, hi, I'm Owen Durico. I am a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School right now, and frankly, I find it both appalling and shameful that you can sit here inside of your building, wherein, uh, public comment in person is not allowed, listen to the concerns of these teachers and parents and students, and still make the decision again and again to remain in the current state we are. This is not a victimless act, you know? This is not something that does not lead to incredible amounts of pain and suffering, and our already disadvantaged students and staff and communities are the ones who are taking the full force, well, the, the majority of the force of this. And this is consistent with a pattern of refusal to fundamentally address the racist practices here in Cincinnati public schools. I'm actually standing outside of the building right now. Uh, earlier today, we had a large group of, uh, concerned, uh, students and teachers and other activists here to protest the, uh, the really, um, appalling, uh, lack of serious addressing of the racist, uh, practices within our school district, namely, our continued and even now strengthening relationship with the Cincinnati Police Department. And I would ask, uh, all of you that you think about what people are saying tonight and what you have been told for weeks upon weeks upon weeks, and take some decisive action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yusuf Manir.
Hello, my name is Yusuf Manir. I am a senior at Walnut Hills High School, and like Owen said, we're outside your house right now. We are here because we are tired of seeing you guys sit in your virtual room, six feet apart, talking about, oh, maybe we should go three feet apart. We're tired of it. Like Owen said, this is not a victimless crime. Your, your actions will lead to people getting COVID, they'll lead to them getting sick, and they'll lead potentially to some kids, some teachers, some of the people that you are responsible for dying. Even more than that, there's the pressing issue of the racism that has been present in Wal- in CPS schools forever. And that especially is the role that CPD plays and the fact that you put police officers, people with guns, inside of our schools as a way to criminalize childhood behavior. We're outside of your building right now. We want you to come outside right now and talk to us. And if you won't, I want any explanation as to why. We're here at your house. I want to talk to you. We want to talk to you. We want to know what it is about the police that makes them so appealing to you and what it is about criminalizing Black and Brown students and potentially ruining their lives that is so appealing to you guys. So come outside, we're here right now. I want to talk to all of you, or at, at least some of you. The only one that has even shown a little bit of inclination to talk to us is Mr. Marowski. Proud of you, Mr. Marowski. The rest of you, anytime something racist happens in a CPS school, that's on you. Anytime a student is referred to the police, which is disproportionately Black and Brown students, according to the data that you're so fond of, according, according to your, according to the data, you're complicit. This is on you. We want you to get CPD out of CPS, fix our schools, and establish anti-racism immediately. Come outside, we'll be waiting for at least 10 minutes. We're here in your house. Come on. If you're willing to send kids back in person, you should be willing to talk to us in person.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Hannah S., followed by Althea Kearney, followed by Ms. Sellers. Go ahead, Hannah.
Thank Hello?
Yes, we can't see you. Click your visibility icon, please.
I don't have that option because my screen says connecting as presenter.
Uh, you do, I'm, I'm sorry?
It still says that it's connecting. You have a
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, well, my name's Hannah Shike. I've actually commented a lot and presented a lot of time on these meetings. Every week, we hear you saying you have data, and you change your criteria over and over, but you have no solutions for us as remote students. You have no solutions for the teachers that want to speak out, that want to be remote as well. Our students and our staff are overworked, we're exhausted mentally and physically, and there's no solutions. It is now November. We have four weeks left of school before Christmas break, before the end of this semester, and I can't say my kids have learned anything. And it's not just me. There's other parents that are concerned for their child's education, and we have no options. We just stick with what we have. CDA is overwhelmed. We're, we're either stuck remo- remote, as in homeschooling, which means we lose our spots at CPS, or we stay with this and our children don't learn. This pandemic is not going to go away anytime soon. Our numbers are rising. You yourself said, within nine weeks, you were facing a crisis to where we don't have enough staff to treat people in hospitals. Our net, our positivity rate for Hamilton County, you said, is 9%. It was 6% last week. It's spiraling out of control. I don't know. I don't know what else to say other than we need more. I mean, our kids deserve an education. Our kids' absentee rates is higher now than it was when we were virtual all five days. It was not that big of a deal on teachers, I don't think. I could be wrong, because I'm not a teacher, but you can't tell me. Teachers are not overwhelmed right now. It's unfair to them. It's unfair to our
Thank you. Your, your time's run out. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Althea Kearney, followed by Ms. Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Kearney.
Thank, thank you so much. Are you able to see me and hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Um, I want to add to the comments that many have made, and man, weren't those two kids inspiring? Like, I just want to give them a standing ovation, because I thought that their ability to speak their mind and to be there and bring this discussion directly to you is inspiring. So with that said, Logan Nagel mentioned signal and noise earlier. That's profoundly important, but something else that's profoundly important is the difference between forward-looking projections and rear-looking projections. And right now, the vast majority of the data that you are using to make these decisions is like looking in a rearview mirror. The one source that you have listed that you look at that is a forward-looking projection was the state of Ohio's, uh, trend data for us, and you apparently have dismissed that. It's more important to know where we are going and not where we have just been. In lieu of that, I'm going to give you an indicator that is of this time. The CDC recently changed their definition of close contact, and for the last two weeks, I have been trying to get an answer from anyone at the district, anyone at my school, anyone on this board, to answer how you are changing the procedures around contact tracing, given that the definition of close contact has changed. This is vitally important, and that definition of close contact being changed, by the way, one of the major features of that study that caused the CDC to change guidance for the entire nation was that asymptomatic spread is happening. It is real, and even your experts tonight, they didn't tell you asymptomatic spread is not a problem. Pardon the double negative. What they told you is that we don't yet have the data, which brings me back to, please start looking forward. Take Mr. Sample, take Logan Nagel, take Gillian Whitaker's voices, and please start paying attention to what is coming up, because as I told you three weeks ago, the peak is here, and those kids are right. This isn't a victimless crime.
Thank you.
Is DFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Is she on? Ms. Sellers? Okay, well, she's not there. I, I, I don't know what to say. She's not there. Okay. All right, so, uh, we're at the point now where I think we can open up for a conversation, among board members, and just to kind of put things in context, the superintendent, presented to us, um, some consideration for learning model options with pros and, pros and cons, and, um, I think it is our opportunity to respond to that and also to make comment if, whatever it, it's, it's your discussion. So I think at the end of this, though, I think what our public is seeking is clear direction, clear direction. And I also want to say that two weeks ago at a board meeting, we did essentially agree that the superintendent could recommend and, um, offer her position about that recommendation and, and what it is she was seeking. So we also want to make sure she has that opportunity. Um, Ms. Sellers?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we, I don't know why we lost you. What, I don't know what happened.
I was demoted from being a participant to an attendee when it was my time. Hear me now?
Okay, go ahead.
I am not muted. Okay, I was demoted from a participant to an attendee, um, but to say this evening that, um, um, we are in the middle of a pandemic. It seems as if many people in the community are forgetting about that, and they just want school as business as usual. And at this time, um, I am not sure why the medical team, who is, is not using their own guidelines. I have known one of the doctors for years, and I cannot understand it, and I don't think they really understand what it's like being in a classroom in a Ms. Mitchell has said that, um, we have a problem with staffing. Paul McDowell has said we have a problem with staffing, and it is, if that is not even enough. Um, based on the COVID measures that we are used locally to inform school planning, as of November 8th, we have had 40 new cases of staff. That's in three days. You've had an increase of 40 cases. It is escalating. This is not the time to say, we're going to go back as business as usual. This is not the time to say we're going to be in school for two more weeks. This, this county is escalating, the city is escalating, and the district is escalating. As of November the 8th, we had, um, um, using the data that this, that the, is making the decision for, um, the district and schools, it says if there are more than 25 cases per 100,000, it's considered it remote learning. On November the 8th, we were at 40 cases per 100,000. The positivity rate should be under 5%. Hamilton County is now 8%. Cincinnati is 6.2%. We have had 96 new cases per day. The numbers are record-breaking. The number of new cases are higher than ever before, since the very beginning of COVID. Since yesterday, we have received letters of concerns by over 25 schools. Several sent letters to us at the CFT office, and they said that they are scared to death to be in school, but they are also scared of retaliation. This is not normal behavior. This is not how employees should be, this is not how you retain teachers to remain cushioned. It's almost as if there are people who are trying to say, we don't think that teachers matter. And it's my job as president of the teachers' union to make sure that teachers are in an environment where they are safe, where they feel like they're not going to take something home to die. Of those 40 teachers in the last three days, we could say how many are going to end up in the hospital? We can't say how many could die. We have lots of teachers with underlying conditions, and it's not fair that every day they're walking into the building with a fear of what is going to happen to them if they're going to get the case. You are not getting the accurate numbers, and you're getting delayed numbers, and we are, we should be looking forward, just like the lady in front of me. I'm sorry, but we are contributing to the community spread. DPS, staff, and students are not isolated from the bubble of the community. And when they say, we're not going to eat together for Thanksgiving, well, come and eat in a classroom with students who don't have masks on. Maybe if you're saying that's so safe, that's how it should be for Thanksgiving. I just cannot believe that I have been hearing, and it's as if everybody in the district is, um, who's making a decision is ignoring what the superintendent is saying. She basically said, it's, they're not going to be staffing to keep the schools open, and that's all that I'm going to say this evening. I can, I am so by the presentations tonight, by the medical community, and I hope Dr. Khan calls me directly. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so let's open up for a discussion. We, we can start, basically, if we want to, uh, review again what the superintendent's, recommendations were, um, just to kind of summarize it.
I believe those are options.
Well, options, but, okay, you, we can call them whatever we want. Considerations is actually the word that she used. Okay. So, uh, she mentioned, she talked about, uh, the pros and cons, the pros of the blended, uh, being, that being, um, social and most, the impact of the social-emotional aspect, the benefits for the younger kids, um, and, um, the in-person supports for some of our unique populations, such as kids with special needs. The pros of distance, uh, being the, um, staff absences, um, increase of staff absences, shared information about the escalation of the health risk for the populations in those zip codes, I thought was provocative, but, um, um, also expressed concerns about the decrease in student attendance. Uh, is there anything else? I, I want to make sure. I'm opening up to you all. Are there other things? Mr. Messer?
Thank you. So, yeah, so I'm, yes, those are the options. I am personally, as a board member, interested in the recommendation of our superintendent based on her work with our administration and community input, balancing the, the health risk and frankly, our ability to even do business. You know, I think, uh, companies, you know, that would have 780 people absent, uh, from work for health reasons, would be very difficult to, uh, operate. And I think a good place for me to start is a recommendation on, based on the data and the reality of the world that we're trying to operate schools in without staff, um, in some cases, et cetera, what is the recommendation of the option?
Okay. Superintendent, um, you know, there's a part of me that wants a recommendation, and then there's a part of me that doesn't want to put you in a position where, um, somehow your, your recommendation gets minimized or, or whatever. So, um, I don't know what board members' preference is, if, if you all want the rec- a recommendation from her position, or if you want to have a conversation about it first. I do think, though, I think I'm going to remind us that we did say two weeks ago that she basically has the authority. We, we said to her, she has the authority to make a decision. We said to her, she has the authority to make a decision about whether, at that time, it was to close or stay open. And I know people disagree with that, but that's essentially, that's what we decided on that time. So let's open it up for conversation first. Ms. Bolton first, and then Mr. Messer.
I have a question because of some of the comments about data. There seems to, at least Julie or others seem to be quoting different data, even about our attendance and does those numbers jive that have been testified to dive with like the numbers that we heard tonight?
I didn't actually caption or write down the specific numbers that she mentioned other than, well, she did say 40 cases within the last three weeks. Derek, can we confirm or fact check that? Forty cases with, actually, we could probably, we could probably do it really quickly by looking at the chart that shows the number of cases per day.
Because I was very impressed with the numbers today and I thought it was good to hone in to our most local numbers and the district numbers. And so I wanted to just make sure that I feel secure about those numbers. I did until a few people said other numbers, but maybe, maybe I was misinterpreting the others' statements.
Okay, Mr. Messer, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I just think back to the original question. It was August the 3rd that we had a meeting and we said.
August 3rd?
Pardon me?
November 3rd or August?
It was August 3rd when we had a discussion as a board. And we can refer back to that meeting, but that's when we said, you know, we need to allow the superintendent to lead us because of the complex decision making. And so I go back to that question and I hope that my fellow board members will allow us to get the recommendation of the team that works 24/7 in leading this district.
Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. And it was August 3rd, Mr. Messer's right. And I remember when we had that conversation, it was after September 14th. We had that really long meeting and then the 21st, we voted on the option. Then the 3rd, we had the discussion. I feel as if the superintendent has given us two recommendations. And I'm comfortable with having a discussion and trying to figure out out of those two which to go with, because like I said in my previous comments, there's a lot of good info, made me at least feel okay, and a lot of info that continues to have me concerned. So I net out at the same place, which is that we should be remote to answer the question directly. I also feel that there is a case to be made to stay remote longer than January. I'm talking all the way to spring break. I know that wasn't part of the superintendent's recommendation, but we can all look at and interpret data how we want, but I remain gravely concerned about our lack of confidence in anything regarding this virus in children. The medical experts can't say anything with confidence either. And I respect that they don't attempt to. There's so much we don't know. And I'm just going to echo something I know I've said and I know President Jones said a few meetings ago regarding taking some time to breathe. I don't know that January is enough time. And like Dr. Khan said, we don't know what the sort of cycle is of this virus. We think it could be worse now. We're not entirely sure. We think it might sync up with the flu. We don't know what that would look like. And so I am for going remote and I'm also for suggesting staying remote until spring break.
Okay, I see you, Ms. Bowers. You know, just to add this to the discussion, you know, I don't think we necessarily, I think there has to be some direction given. We go with the superintendent's recommendation or whatever, then we can talk about when, what the next step is after that. But I think for the sake of clarity, so that our public knows kind of what the decision is or what have you in moving forward, if, and I hear you very clearly saying what your position is on this. But to say whether or not recommend, whether we, the superintendent is saying, her option was, I believe, sometime before, Chris, before the end or right after the Thanksgiving break or the end of the year. So that's, those are the options we have. Go ahead, Mr. Morosky.
And just to wrap up, the second piece that I've sort of aligned on is the health piece, of course, but then the learning piece. And again, I guess to beat a dead horse at this point, the consistent disruption versus inconsistent disruption. And we've heard tonight and we've read letters, it is still in my opinion that having a virtual option that kids see an adult five days a week is going to result, and better results than two days on, two days by yourself, one day we'll figure it out. Students I've talked to in the community feel confused. Parents that want their kids back are starting to feel confused. And I just feel pedagogically speaking, in addition to the public health, it would make some sense to just stabilize for a minute.
Okay, thank you.
President Jones, if I could just fact check the one piece of information that you asked me for. So I just went back specifically to the chart that we provided since May through today, or through yesterday, for the number of cases. So I just counted back to October the 30th, which is less than two weeks. It's not even a week and a half. Tomorrow would be a week and a half. And we have 47 cases since October 30th of, for our staff members, 47.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bates, and then Ms. Bowers.
Okay, things I really would like, and I believe this is something that the board endorsed, that we reconsidered this color system. And I like to liken it to, you know, the color coded system, from what I'm gathering, is an easy way for people to understand how bad, you know, the severity in the community. Kind of like the report cards with the A, B, C, D, and F. Seriously, and people may understand these very simple, you know, labels, but not understand what, you know, the manipulation underneath all of that in both cases. And also the.
Political.
The orange, red, purple, what age groups does that pertain to? When we look at the map that, you know, Ms. Mitchell put together, are there nursing homes in those neighborhoods? There's probably not a whole lot of nursing homes in suburban Mason, you know. Are these people who are in the 75 to 90 age group? That's, so why would we consider keeping, you know, consider a huge risk to children when it's, you know, another population that is suffering due to this virus? That's a consideration. And something else that hasn't been an option since the very beginning, and actually Ms. Mitchell did make this an option when we were considering options, why is it all or nothing? I mean, why don't we consider perhaps, you know, Walnut Hills is a model, having the older kids go remote? Because they're more vulnerable, from what I understand about the data, that the older kids are more susceptible to the illness symptomatically than the younger kids. And kind of go by school, for the pre-K through six, go school by school or unit by unit, depending on what's going on in units. And, you know, if it makes sense to have the high schools go remote, we certainly have that model. So I'm not sure that I'm ready to say, let's go all remote, let's go all blended. Let's, let's, let's look at the communities, let's look at the schools and the absences rather than just broad brushing this decision.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, President Jones. And I just want to comment on Board Member Bates's suggestion just now. I think that falls into some type of equity issue, too. If we start doing piece by piece, school by school, neighborhood by neighborhood, that becomes an issue for me when we do that. Because if you're looking at a school, we know that different students learn differently. It's going to be a challenge for everyone. But I just think that falls into an equity issue if we start doing that. But the comment that I wanted to make was, I wanted to add a concern for the pros. For me, looking at the first five weeks of school when we were in remote learning, the struggle that we had, not only with our little kids, preschoolers, I heard a parent talking about the preschool, how remote learning is not beneficial for the preschooler, but we also talked about our self-contained special needs students. And I think that we left out our identified students who may not be in self-contained special, in classrooms, but the students that are on IEPs and 504s were not getting the support that they needed per their IEPs and 504s. That is a barrier and an equity issue. So for me, if we are, if that is, and the pros are pretty heavy as far as the benefits of remote learning, but how do we make sure that those students are getting service? Because in the community, they were not. Seeing their regular ed teacher doesn't equate to the individualized support that they need, which is why they have an IEP or a 504. So I think we're missing that population somewhere. If that remote learning, and just a reassurance and the communication part has always been an issue with me. I know that communication does not get down to the building levels well, therefore doesn't get to the parents. Well, that's always been the issue for me with our, with our team here. We don't do that well. And we've heard parents say that tonight. We maybe have progress, but we're not doing it well. So I just wanted to reiterate the importance of making sure we don't leave out that special ed population that may not be in a self-contained classroom.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I'm still working from, and I don't know what the date was, but I'm still working from the original suggestion, recommendation, or guideposts that the superintendent provided us. And those were those five guidelines that we should be making decisions by. I have lived by that, based upon that recommendation, that huge recommendation. And it was supposed to guide, and I think it has, everything we've done about it. And that was health and safety, one guideline, data-driven, to Ms. Bowers's point, equity, as much in-person learning as possible, and fiscal responsibility. And none of those superseded the other. We put health and safety at the beginning for obvious reasons. We were in a crisis and we didn't know what was going on and you had to build an entire protocol around the health and safety piece to even begin to think about having kids come back. For me, there's a significant issue here that I don't want to lose, that we are going to try to do as much in-person as possible. I think that is an equity issue. I don't think the whole district wants to be remote. We just heard tonight, unless they don't know what they're talking about, that right now, possibly the safest place for our children to be is the school district, is in school. And so as we have this conversation, I still would be very much interested in finding a way to do blended. And I'm under the assumption, right or wrong, that the interest at the instructional level is blended, except we have an issue of staffing because of attendance, whether it's illness or whether it's a quarantine, whether it's whatever. So to me, that's more of an internal problem, very big problem to be worked out in some way or shape or form. But you heard tonight, an equal number of people saying remote, or sort of an equal number, it seemed like it, about remote and also about the blended piece. And it just seems to me that I would assume that things probably would be very bad, possibly after Thanksgiving. So I'd like to try to get to Thanksgiving. I know we talked at length of months ago about the December piece and expanding the winter break as a possibility. But I would like us to just keep on the table, the blended. And I think our goal should be having some sort of our muscled-out plan to be able to do blending, blended, which means remote and also in-person, when we get to the second semester and be confident that we can do what we need to do. But in that interim, I really am still, I'd like to still put my cards on the table for blended as well as the original recommendation from the superintendent.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to start cutting people off in a minute. We, because we need to, we need to move on. But Mr. Lindy, did you have your hand up?
I did, thanks, President Jones. I'll try to be really brief on this. I think I wanted to start by just appreciating what Board Member Messer said about following from a recommendation from the superintendent. I think we set up our superintendent for success and to lead when we, when we share with her a desire that she make a recommendation and then absent some overwhelming piece of evidence or disagreement, we follow it. And I think, if I assume for a second that the recommendation would be, let's shift back to virtual instruction through the rest of the semester. I think for my part, I feel like that makes me sad, but I also think it makes sense. And the issues that really have moved me on this, I think are chiefly the attendance of students and the attendance of staff. Like if we're actually reaching fewer kids and if we can't do it safely because people have to quarantine because they're in close contact with a confirmed case, those seem like pretty good arguments to me, even though I wish we could have kids in person. I'll just, I want to note that I was so compelled by the presentation from Dr. Amin and Dr. Khan about the fact that we have had zero instances, zero, of students passing the virus to other students and zero examples of students passing the virus to adults. So, but still, I think the attendance issues for students and staff feel quite compelling. I think that the thing I'll finish with are just some questions I would have for the superintendent, which is, like, is there any way to do some thoughtful triage around like age levels and students with special needs? If we can't have all school doing blended, is there some way to get our very youngest kids back for some in-person? Is there some way to, for Board Member Bowers's point, about making sure that students with special needs, maybe also students with limited English, or like getting some in-person help that they wouldn't get otherwise? And I think my last point is just that if this does create some breathing room for the administration to know that we're going to be virtual between now and the end of the holidays, does this create some space to think creatively about what could be true in the second semester in a way that gives more families and more teachers more choices, but does set up a workable and stable system? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to add my comments. I'm, I have to admit to being extremely anxious and somewhat irritated right now. Not only from some of the statements made in hearing of the public, and I just want to clarify something. Somebody spoke about this being draining. It is probably magnified for us because we're directed, we're charged with making a tough decision in these unforeseen circumstances that we really have no control over. And everybody wants what they want, including board members. And it makes no sense to me because we're here now rehashing everything that we've rehashed for the last month. And I said that to say, we at some point have to put our trust in the superintendent to be able to make decisions and us support it. And there are pieces of what everybody has said up here that I agree with. I just don't agree that tonight is the night to talk about it. I think we asked the superintendent what her recommendation is and if the superintendent says, I think we should close for this period of time for this reason, my opinion is she gave very compelling information about why we should. And we just support that and try to figure out how we make all these other pieces work. But the most compelling piece of information, and then I'll be quiet, the most compelling piece of information to me, well, there's a couple. But one was around, when I looked at that chart around the ZIP codes. But one was around, when I looked at that chart around the ZIP codes, that's the equity piece for me. And I am really bothered by conversations that say, with all due respect to Ms. Bates, all or nothing, can we do this, can we do that? That's an equity issue for me. Look at where these ZIP codes are. They're in the core of our city. These are communities of color and are poverty areas. We have got to do something to get some stability and consistency, not only in the safe and healthy stuff, the health stuff, but we also got to rethink. Somebody talked about rethinking the strategy. We need time for that. I don't even want to have a discussion anymore. I'm sorry. I don't want to have a discussion about what our next step is, not tonight. That's just where I am. I don't want to have that discussion. I think we take, I want to see us listen to the superintendent's recommendation, and we either accept it or we don't. And if we don't, I'm going to have an issue with that, because she is the leader of this district, and we should be trying to support her.
Thank you, thank you. Just a quick thing on the equity piece. I think it's, we're having a definition problem about equity. Equity is differences. It's not everybody getting the same thing. So I think some of the things that Ms. Bowers and Ms. Bates has said, doing things differently, depending upon the clientele, depending upon the area, I think that is equity. And I do think, new item, however this rolls out tonight, everybody on this board wants to support the superintendent, period. I think that's pretty clear. But tonight, here we're going to miss another opportunity if you don't play this correctly. We heard the experts tell us that we have achieved best practice status nationally, because we have done whatever it is, and we don't have the spread, the district is safe. That should be our message tonight. But possibly what's going to be our message instead is that we're going to just go remote. The reality is, they told us that we've done something right. And my point would be, whatever anybody decides, or whatever the superintendent recommends, that needs to be the message. It'll be a confusing message when we go remote, because we're so safe. But I think we have to figure out a way to really make that a case, because I think part of the panic, rightfully so, and the fear, rightfully so, is what's happening in the community. I don't want the message to be, it's what's happening here.
Yes. Well, and if I could add to that, I appreciated hearing what they said, and I trust the data, okay? But here's what I also heard the superintendent say, they can't speak to what's happening day-to-day in our schools. They can't speak to the decrease in student enrollment. They can't speak to not having enough coverage and not having the kids in the seats. That's a trickle effect, because it impacts funding. We're paying contract services, and I'll use buses as an example. We're busing, what, empty buses? Because we don't have kids in the seats?
We're still paying for buses.
But I'm just saying, that's one of the things that I'm concerned about, too. I don't care what we, we want what we want as individuals. I'm hearing that very clearly. The guidance that we need to follow is what our superintendent and leadership team experiences every single day. That's the guidance. But yeah, we are best practice. I would love for us to get to that. That's where, when it's important to talk about rethink, rethinking strategy.
They told us.
I would love for us to get to that.
But they told us that whatever we've done since June, or probably, knowing how long these folks have worked, since March, when this happened, they did tell us today, which should be the headline, that we are at best practice and we have achieved this wonderful thing.
I agree.
That's the first message.
But that doesn't mean kids need to be in school. That does not mean that kids should be...
It may or may not mean, but it also means that they perhaps could be. And we're just, maybe we'll decide not, that's fine, and I'm okay with that. I'm just saying, the message needs to reflect that achievement, because if we're...
I don't have a problem with the message.
Okay. Well, thank you.
All right. So what's our next step? Thank you, Superintendent. We're going to ask you for your recommendation.
Okay, I was just doing some final calculations. So I believe that the protocols that we've put in place with the assistance of Children's Hospital, so like, make no mistake, I recognize this thoroughly, that if it were not for the support of Children's Hospital and the Cincinnati Health Department and the Health Collaborative, we would probably not be as far along in our safety protocols as we are. And so a lot of thanks to them for being like a dog on a bone every day at 7:30 in the morning, working with us on all of the safety protocols. And so we are safe in our schools. However, I think that we are growing to the point of death, legitimate absences due to isolation and quarantine, that is going to be harder and harder for us to, with fidelity, implement the safety precautions that have been identified for us and have what has made us so safe within our schools. So I think that we are at the point of compromising that safety. I mentioned that we've had 47 teachers or staff members with COVID since October 30th. I just looked at the data just to add up really quickly. In terms of our RNs, since November the 11th, we've had 43 instances of absences. And again, they are a key component to the identification of our kids who need to go to the isolation room, their assessment, and then once they get there, to get verification from a family member to be able to test them. So what I would not want to have happen is that we don't have the staff in place to take care of our kids and keep them safe and keep the staff members safe, and then our data starts to decline in terms of the spread at schools, and then it's considered that the system wasn't a good system. And the system was a good system, it just couldn't keep up with the capacity of the people needed to run the system authentically. My major concern is having the staff to be able to run the buildings, to operate the buildings in a safe manner, in addition to the level of stress that our staff, they're under. And it would be very easy for me to sweep that under the rug and say, that's just about your feelings, Laura, but they're real, and it will impact the performance of our staff members. I do think, however, that we should give enough opportunity for parents, if the decision is to go to distance learning, for them to prepare for that. I've been thinking through, and we've thought through, the variation in terms of this classroom or this school, and logistically, it could be extremely challenging to be able to manage and to support on a daily basis. So is this school in session? Is transportation running for this school? Or is it running for this grade level? And then the popcorn-ing effect that we're seeing with staff being out, it's all over the place. There may be some schools who haven't had staff out, but it's not predictable. So I can't say with 100% certainty, this school will never have staff out. I don't know. So my recommendation is that we move to distance learning, to be able to keep people safe, and also be able to have our kids have instruction by a teacher five days a week.
Yes, Mr. Messer?
Thank you for that. And then, just a follow-up question to that, and then kind of what would be your ideal timing for implementation?
So, in looking at the calendar, I considered November the 20th to be the last day of face-to-face blended instruction before the Thanksgiving break, and then distance learning would begin on the 23rd and the 24th, and then the kids are out for Thanksgiving, the 25th through the end of the day on the 27th, and then back in class on the 30th. I do not believe that the three-week timeframe is enough time to say that the data's improved so much so that we should go back in person at that time. So my recommendation would be that we would stay in distance learning at least until the beginning of the new year, the new calendar year, so January. I would love to know the doctors, the physicians' thoughts on what could possibly be the impact of the winter holiday, to even see, quite honestly, if the data will improve enough to come back at the beginning of January. And I will say this, as an educator, almost 30 years, my heart is for the kids to be in session. That is what I really believe is best for our students. We don't have enough staff to sufficiently, effectively, safely operate the buildings on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Bolton?
Just an additional comment, then, I think at our next meeting, we're supposed to be talking about budget, or passing budget. I would suggest...
A budget hearing.
Please?
It's supposed to be a public hearing of the budget on the 16th.
Okay. I just think that that probably needs to be reviewed, because we just did change sort of the approach. So I don't know if the treasurer needs more time for that, because of that, the longest-living budget in the history of the world. I just think that, like the president mentioned, buses, we've mentioned staffing and what have you, I think that probably needs to review.
I agree with that. But let me ask the question, in terms of the timeline, it has to be finalized, when is the final approval needed? Sorry, treasurer.
That's okay. So we've met the initial timeline, we've loaded the 625 budget with a very large negative contingency to balance. So we just, the sooner the better, because we're already up against next year's budget cycle. The five-year forecast is supposed to be presented on the 16th. So I'm trying to think of what the first meeting in December is, the 4th, is that right? Does anyone know?
Can I rephrase a question? We did this before, and we worked that timeline through with the Finance Committee. Do we have time to do that? When is the Finance Committee meeting?
Third Thursday of November, I guess. I think that would be useful. It may be that the Finance Committee needs to meet earlier.
Earlier.
And would have to. I think, too, this does, as you said, they have to pass the five-year forecast when?
Well, we're going to try to put it through on the 16th. I can wait and do it on the 23rd. We have to file it by the 30th, so I need board action absolutely by the 23rd.
Okay.
So the Finance Committee's on the 19th, the next board meeting's on the 16th. So if we want to go through Finance Committee, then we could do the budget and the forecast on the 23rd.
Okay. Then I think the Finance Meeting, maybe we can get to dates to move it earlier than the 19th, or would you be ready earlier than the 19th?
We'll be ready when you set the date.
Okay. Members?
Okay.
Mr. Lindy?
How about if we, I don't know if we need to make it an assignment, Ms. Bolton, as Chair of the Finance, you are going to coordinate that with the treasurer and your members, and then you all can decide the timeline and do whatever you need.
That'd be great, thank you.
Would it be ready to share on the 16th?
Some parts of it might be.
You mean a revised timeline?
Yes.
Yeah. The revised timeline shared with full board on the 16th?
Yeah. Let's do that.
Okay, great.
President Jones, when you're ready, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Lindy.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I just can never tell when I'm on the screen or not. So I think I wanted to go back to the superintendent and wanted to do two things. One was, I really appreciate the recommendation. I think this is closer to the system working the way it's supposed to be. I think that's great, and I think we should follow your recommendation. I want to ask just a couple of questions about one part of it, to make sure I really understand, but whatever the answers to these questions are, I think we should do your recommendation. I was trying to follow the piece about, you know, is there some way to reach in-person some smaller segment of students, whether it's early learners, or students with special needs, or students with limited English? And the thing I was, what I heard you say was, you're still going to have the attendance issues, because you got, you know, two second-grade teachers in a given elementary school, and we're working with young kids, there's the same likelihood that one or both of those two second-grade teachers are going to be out, given the rate of infection in the community, and that creates the same kind of coverage problem in that particular school that we're dealing with now. And so I think one question I'm having is like, am I following that correctly? And then if I am, I was just trying to figure out, is there anything we could possibly do about that? And the only thing I could come up with was the idea that, you know, if our subpool is built for a district K-12, and we are only having school with, you know, some targeted group of kids, whatever the group is we thought we could pull off safely, does having a larger subpool to draw from do any work here? Or am I missing some important piece of this, and everything I said is wrong?
So thank you for asking for that clarification. So when I was talking about a variance in terms of the logistics being really difficult, I wasn't really, in my mind, I wasn't thinking about students with disabilities or really young students. I was just saying in general. So if I said, this week it's going to be the fifth-grade classes at John P. Parker are closed down, but the rest of the school is open, that logistically is hard to manage when you have so many schools and a communication and a transportation. So I wasn't specifically thinking about really young kids and students with disabilities. I will say that initially, when we had that conversation and we're ready to move on that, and I'm not trying to throw any of the staff under the bus, but we did receive pushback on staff members to say, so I'm expendable, but the other staff members, let's say, third through 12th grade are not. And so it was just that rub and that pushback, why do I have to go in when my other colleagues don't have to?
I mean, that's why I think our rationale for the decision is so important, because like, for my part, it's not about, I think the data we've seen is that being in a CPS building is among the safest places in the city of Cincinnati somebody can be. Maybe I misheard the presentation, but it seems like the fact that there's been zero transmission from student to student or student to staff feels really important. However, I think the points you raised about whether we can run the district with the staffing issues we have, because of people who are doing the right thing by quarantining, you know, I just think that that feels like a very different kind of issue to me. And I think it would certainly be okay with me if we don't have an answer to that question in this meeting tonight, but I wanted to flag it as an issue that I think is really important. And I'd love to think, I'd just love to hear more about what your recommendation on that is, given your view of the system.
Absolutely. So if I could have the opportunity to revisit that conversation with the staff and bring it to you back on Monday night.
Yeah, that sounds great, and thank you.
Mr. Messer?
Yes. You know, of course, I'd love our kids to be in school, too. And, you know, I think that the staffing thing, as I said, is real. And we can't operate with some buildings having 38% of their staff out. And, you know, one thing that I know, and I don't want to throw anybody under the bus that are educators, but a couple who were doing pretty well, shared with me the... that are educators, but a couple who were doing pretty well, shared with me the end of last week, that like, the thing that kind of tipped the balance as we threw one more thing, the streaming. And they said, okay, now we've all had it. And so, given this, and now they're going to prepare, be preparing to go remote, are we able to take that off their plate?
Yes. So, we talked about today staying in blended and how would that look moving forward? And we also talked about today pivoting to distance learning. And so we would very easily be able to go back to distance learning for all students at their home school. What I would not recommend is if we are going to go distance learning starting on November the 3rd, that we would not actually do the streaming starting this week for a week and a half. I think it's too much of a disruption and, and not to highlight any one board member, but I do believe that it goes back to something Board Member Murawski said, is that, you know, we need to stabilize the system so we're not up and down and doing this, that, the other with all these disruptions. And quite honestly, we were really just trying to, I was really trying to, well, many people disagree with me, but that's okay, accommodate our families who said, this isn't working for us. We don't want to go to CDA. At the same time though, it put a lot of stress on principals and teachers this week. They were really stressing out about that last week and this week, and I heard them loudly and clearly.
And just the other thing I'll say as a parent, what I appreciate, while it's not ideal, this really actually gives us three weeks to pivot. Because Thanksgiving week, we would have only been going one day anyway, you know, or because of Monday and then, or, well, and my son was Thursday, Friday, so he's only going to do remote on Monday anyway for Olivier. Anyway, the point is, really gives like that three weeks and, and that, that's, you know, it's going to be a lot for families. So I think that amount of time is definitely helpful for parents and caregivers.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Bolton? Okay, I got you, Ms. Bowers. Go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
Just a, a follow-up to what Mr. Lindy said. So is the issue of any variance still on the table? What even different?
So what I was explaining, that I think if we are picking and choosing different grade levels and different subject areas or different schools, I think that's really hard to manage it for so many buildings across the district. I'm saying that I will go back to the team and we will talk about our little students and our students with disabilities to see what's possible.
Thank you. Those, so it would be the variance for the special needs possibly, possibly, and the younger kids? And then, I know we've only once or twice mentioned homeless kids. So that might be, at least nationally is apparently a real crisis. And I would imagine it is here too. So at least with those caveats. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I'm, uh, thank you, Board Member Bolton, to bring up the homeless kids, special population. But I wanted to clarify my statement regarding, or my comment regarding the special needs students. In addition to our self-contained, I'm thinking about our 504 IEP students. I'm not insinuating that they needed to be in the school. I think someone, one of the board members picked up on that and said that that was. My concern is, and I know you're going to bring information back, and I want to ask you if you could, to make that instruction more intentional and accountability is held to being able to be creative and how we engage our, not just our self-contained students, but our IEP, well, there are IEPs, but I mean the included IEP students and the 504 students. The, my, my challenge is, is always around, how do we engage them and be accountable for creatively engaging them, even on remote? Because that was an issue during the five weeks. So I was not promoting that we bring the self-contained or the little kids back, that was not my area. If we're going to do remote, if it's the board's will, then we need to be intentional about our work with our other students.
So if I could respond to that, so I, I saw this as two separate requests by two separate board members. So I captured what you were saying as it relates to our students who have an IEP, who may not be in a specialized classroom. And then I captured with what Mr. Lindy was talking about, which I think he was talking about, students in a specialized classroom. So that's one thing that I, I want to clarify, and I did understand both. The other thing that I do want to just clarify for Board Member Bolton, is we will look, definitely obviously look at our homeless students, but just remember, they're sprinkled all throughout everywhere. So it's not as easy to like, maybe pull all of them as if we might consider for our little kids or our students who are in specialized classrooms, because they're mixed everywhere throughout. But we can definitely look at additional services, instructional services we can provide.
Yeah. That's to, to second what Mr. Bowers was saying. I wasn't thinking of them physically coming here, but indeed, maybe treating it, the other group of kids as well, more intentional and intense service individually, remote.
Okay. Mr. Murawski?
And just kind of, I wanted to follow up on that too and give a couple of shout-outs sort of to Ms. Bolton's point and Superintendent Mitchell's point. For the past five years, in my professional capacity, I've served on the Solutions for Family Homelessness Task Force, which is the CEOs of all the family shelters. And I would just like, biweekly, we have calls, and I would just like to give a shout-out to Rebecca Beach and Assistant Superintendent Murphy. Ever since the beginning of this, because the shelters are packed, and so hotels are where a lot of the families are, we can always do everything better, but I would, I just think the whole board should probably know, like, what a good job Assistant Superintendent Murphy and Rebecca Beach have done with their team of getting devices to the families, making sure they have what they need to pipe in, and, you know, having the ability to plug in remote, certainly not for everybody because the stability is so important and obviously, you know, it is more ideal to be in person. But having the flexibility to pipe in while some of these families are moving around has been, has been good. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to Project Connect and their team, and the updates I get in my other life.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Yes, and I don't want to lose sight of the third-grade guarantee. I didn't hear that we were going to get waived for that. And when you truly talk about equity, it's the late readers that need the most support. And in, in a big way, maybe those, the least likely to receive it during virtual learning. So I would, I would ask that the, that the administration come up with a plan to address reading and ensuring that the third-grade guarantee is met and, and have a very deliberate way to reach that goal.
Yes. So we did administer the third-grade reading assessment. We had 80% of our kids participate, so the kids who actually came to school, but definitely can put some mechanisms in place to support our kids. And we'll have some data back soon as to how those kids performed and what we need to do to close gaps for them. The good thing is that we have reading specialists for all of our Title I schools, that we may be able to customize services for our kids. So thank you for highlighting that.
And, and then a, a final comment, and it's short. I'm, I'm listening to all the comments from board members, all good points, not disputing that. But in my head, I'm thinking about what an opportunity to really strengthen what we do in virtual, for whatever the future holds for us. And so as we talk about variance and all of that, and I'm, you know, I, I might have a different definition of variance, but I also think it's an opportunity, we, you know, we got to work with our partners. I have no idea if they've adjusted how they do business. And, and you would know better than me, but you know, if they're, that might be a way to help address some of the concerns and ideas that people have about serving these unique populations. Because we're not in this by ourselves. And, you know, the expectation, which is the way traditional schools work, kids come in class, and everybody wants that. They come to school and all the services come in to provide services and support. But we've also got to extend and, and ask to people to see if they can work with us to do it differently. So I, that's, you know, that's just my thought on that. Anything else from board members around that? Are we in a good place? Not me, but I apologize, but not me. But anyway, neither here nor there. Okay. Assignments? I think we actually combined some of our assignments, but do we want to do assignment? I, if, if what I heard is correct, the Superintendent recommended?
Have Superintendent say it.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
Okay. So my recommendation is that November the 20th would be the last day of in-person instruction for the remainder of this calendar year. And that students return to in-person learning, if the data supports it in terms of COVID cases reduction. We return after the winter break in January. And in the meantime, during that time period, we would look at our specialized classrooms, our students who have an IEP, our homeless students, as well as our very young students, in addition to our early readers. And that the other part of the recommendation is that next week, which would be the last week of in-person before the winter break, that we would not have virtual learning at your own school, because it's just doing another thing in the mix before we transition to something else. And that's parents can access work through Schoology for their students who have chosen not to go to CDA.
Anything else? Board members? Ms. Bolton?
Just a clarification on the finances. Can I put that here? Again, we have a board meeting on the 16th, finance on the 19th, and a decisions to be made on the 23rd, as, as well as the hearing, I guess. Just maybe if, after the meeting, finance members, we can figure out an additional time possibly to meet after maybe the Treasurer and I have a, a, a quick meeting, and then we can find some dates to add to those three, if that works, from Mr. Lindy and Ms. Bates.
Just, if, if I might ask, Ms. Bolton, if you would mind putting that in writing, just so when we're developing the agenda, I'll know exactly what the timelines are.
Great, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other assignments? Are we sure? Okay. Ms. Bolton?
No, no assignment, just one thing, the last two sentences that Superintendent said, so there's no this, you know, misunderstanding about the remote from school remote. If you'll just say that again, the last couple of sentences.
Yes. So during this transition week, so next week, students who are not coming to in-person and they have not selected CDA, will stay on distance learning and access their schoolwork through Schoology. So that we are not doing streaming during that week to then transition to distance learning.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarification. Okay. All right. Having, having no other business before us, slow move. I declare the meeting adjourned.